Okay, we're gonna be starting. Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee Meeting for November 15, 2023. Start off with 1.1, District Vision. The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core Values. In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. 1.2, Statement by Chair, Video and Audio Recording of Meeting. This school committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, the chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing nobody? 2.1, Vision of a Graduate Pathway Enrichment at Barnstable West Barnstable Elementary. Sarah?
Great, thank you.
Beth? I don't know who I'm sorry, I didn't see who I was.
We're joined tonight.
I didn't see who on my paper who I'm turning it over to.
With Principal Beth Forbes and Assistant Principal Katie Beebe to talk about a new enrichment opportunity that is meeting with some really nice success at BWB this year.
Sorry, Beth.
No worries. If you want to do it, Sarah. So, thank you, everybody, for inviting us here tonight to talk a little bit about our vision of a graduate pathways that we started this year. We started thinking a lot when Dr. Hearn had us as a district start having conversations about the vision of a graduate and what it looks like, and we really started thinking about our kids and how some of them have strengths in math and reading, and others have strengths in social areas and arts, and all of our vision of a graduate seemed to meet together and kind of have a moment for us to say, how can we give opportunities for kids to explore all of these options in at least a small way? So, we did start putting together a structure so that we could have different pathways happening throughout the school. We are modeled after BCIS, who has done this for a few years on a smaller scale, so thank you to Kathy. And we were able to structure a time for just a half an hour on Thursdays. We did it all through the month of October, and we plan to do it again for the month of March. All of our staff was involved, so either as a leader or as an assistant. And then we also reached out to community members and parents, and it turned out to be a really amazing experience for the kids. So, we're gonna start out with a little video. So, you can see amazing things happened, and we were so excited, the kids were so excited. We're gonna talk a little bit more about the other pieces, but one thing we noticed too is we had zero behavior write-ups on any of these days during this time. So, it was really the kids were so engaged, small groups, because we had enough things going on, so it was really, really great. So, these are the different domains of our vision of a graduate. So, Knowledge Seeker, you can see underneath what that entails, and then some examples that we felt met that criteria. Mindful Drawing, we have relaxation strategies, STEM, sports, and walking club. And then the Self-Aware Graduate, or the Inner Explorer, we had the yoga, relaxation, puzzles, pickleball, crafts, mindful drawing, board games, music, and clay creatures that all would fit in there. The Thoughtful Communicator, and we had Board Games, Police Academy, STEM, and Newspaper Club. The Adaptive Thinker, examples would be STEM, Legos, we did rockets, Fire Academy, and Marine Life. And the Action Taker, Newspaper Club again, Marine Life, Police Academy, Fire Academy, walking clubs turned into really a nature opportunity, which was incredible. We did luck out with the most amazing Thursday weather that you could ever have, so a lot of this ended up outside, but it was great.
So, over those four weeks, we were able to offer 14 offerings for both second and third graders and for kindergarten and first graders. They went in groups with those two age levels. So, and all of the offerings weren't necessarily the same, we were able to vary it a little bit depending on the age group, which was great. The attendance, one thing we learned from our, from the Innovation School was the attendance tends to improve when you have a program like this in place. So, we looked at what the trends were for attendance on those Thursdays, and the first week it was 95% were in attendance, which was pretty average for BWB. But then the next two following weeks, we saw a pretty drastic increase, especially on the 26th with 99.5% of our kids in school a day, which is pretty awesome. I think we dropped again on the second, but there was also kind of a nasty virus going around. So, to be fair, then we probably didn't want them out of school that day. The other thing that we tried to do was get feedback from staff and from the volunteers that came and worked with students to see what they felt was positive about the program, what they wanted to offer for some feedback about what wasn't quite working. One of the questions we asked was how well the day went, and majority of people felt like it really went well. Just one person was so-so, and we know that it was a space issue, which is again something that we talk about at BWB. But, you know, there was really, really positive feedback and stuff that we can grow upon when we redo it in March, which is great. And the last piece is that we really wanted to thank, we were able to get volunteers from the police department, from the fire department to come in and do the police club and the fire club, which was really awesome. They were able to bring drones in, the police dog came and visited, it was, and the fire truck came. They really had a great experience getting really into it with volunteers from the community. Then we also had lots of parents who came in and supported. Some ran groups and others were supports to teachers who were running the groups. So, we really wanted to thank them for coming and supporting us.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments or anything? No? Go ahead, Andre.
Yeah, Mike, just quickly, well done. Vision of a graduate, you know, when you're in kindergarten, you know, you're looking ahead on the future, out into the horizon. But I like the fact that I saw a lot of activities that didn't involve much screen time. So, I know that, you know, you're just getting started on your journey in those elementary years, in those elementary years, but those activities, you know, the inner mindfulness, you know, kind of a big concept for a first or second grader to understand, but certainly getting them away from those flickering images and having some time to process, you know, the actual reality is very, is very encouraging, and I think it's gonna lead to good results. You noted the decreased discipline. Again, I think kids are moving around, kids are being kids rather than watching other kids being kids, and that's very helpful.
And they got to choose also, there was an interest-based survey that went out, both the teachers kind of, what do you want to explore, and then to kids, so most were able to get in their top five, so.
Oh, good, yeah.
And I could always help with pickleball.
I was gonna say, Peter. Peter, I'm gonna be biased to the fire department, and you're gonna be biased to the pickleball? Is that kinda?
I visit Wendy's School almost every day over there playing pickleball.
And that was our AA, who we were able to sub out for a little while so she could run an enrichment as well, so.
Excellent, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you to you for involvement and the staff and all the volunteers, because face without the volunteers, it's not gonna probably happen as well. So, thank you to everybody who kind of made it all work, and kind of take that village to do it, and your leadership and kind of everybody else, but thank you, and it looks like fun, looks like a lot of fun, like a lot of different things. The good thing is, I always look at these and see a lot of smiles, and that's like a big thing. When you see the kids all smiling as they're like in school, think about it, if you have kids smiling in school, that's a great thing, so they're learning, and they don't even realize they're learning necessarily, so, but thank you. Kathy, you have anything? Are you good?
No, just great to see all the different activities. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
I'll be back.
Yeah, yep, don't go too far. Moving on to 3.1, Student Envoy Report. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Riley.
I'm Paloma.
First of all, sports are doing great. We had four teams make it to playoffs, and football and volleyball are in final four, so volleyball's a game tonight, and then football has a game tomorrow.
We wanted to talk about homecoming. Homecoming was really great at our high school. A lot of kids had fun, and we also, student council planned a tailgate beforehand where we had bouncy houses and sumo wrestling, and the food truck for our school was even made an appearance, and they served really good tacos for really cheap, so that was great.
Next, there are concerns about the bathrooms cleanliness and structure, because like they're broke, it's been, the bathrooms have been like broken and dirty, locks are falling off doors, screens have been ripped off windows, installs are covered in things, and it's just really becoming an issue. The school newspaper just wrote a story about this insight, and so that's really good if you want to check that out.
And the last thing we wanted to bring up was, last week, last Thursday, we had a big meeting with all different like student, all different clubs, and like students came in. We had the leaders for the classes, like the.
The cabinets for each class?
Yep, and we even had National Honor Society and us, and we all got together and brainstormed fundraising ideas for the school, and things we like about the school, things we would like to improve, and we have all gone our separate ways now with our own like separate tasks on how to improve.
We are hoping to host at least one of these meetings each term, so we can all keep informed on what other groups are doing, so there's no disconnect.
So, can I just ask a question about that?
Of course.
Just, so, it's kind of like a summit?
Yeah.
And you kind of had, so you had all of the class officers? Along with student council? Along with all the different clubs?
National Honor Society, we want to reach out to more clubs, but at the first one, it was just.
Okay, so, okay, so it was those groups right there, including the National Honor Society, in that you guys all got together and brainstormed and came up with ideas on how to improve it or what's good or?
Yeah.
Excellent. What do you plan on doing with that? Could you by any chance send it to, is it gonna go to like the principal, or is it gonna go to like, I'm just curious, like, I'm encouraging you to like, do something with it. I mean, it's great that you guys, because you're the people that are in the school, so like, that's what's important. So, my thing is, is just like, work on it, but then don't let it die. Make sure you share it with the people, be in the, be in the principal, superintendent, whoever you need to share it with to get, because that's really kind of what you're all looking to do is make the school better, right? So, cool. Yeah, so just kind of just, my advice is, have those meetings and then just kind of like share it with somebody, with, being with, like I said, probably the principal or probably start with the principal or vice-principal, and then go from there, is my advice. Like, just to kind of like, so it just doesn't like, okay, we met, that's great, and then that's the end of it? Like, somebody has to know in order to get things changed, right? So, okay, excellent, though, cool, that's cool. Anything else?
That's it?
That's it? Excellent. Any questions or anything?
Yeah, thanks for doing this. You guys are doing a great job, by the way.
Thank you.
This is the second time this week I heard about the bathroom. A friend of mine called me and said something, they're discussing it on the radio. So, what's going on?
They're just like, there's usually toilet paper and everything littered all over the ground, stalls are covered in marker drawings, half of the stall, like so many, way too many stalls have locks ripped off of them. I've seen screens of windows, like broken, trash is overflowing, it just kind, it's just becoming, or paper towels just like filling a sink.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not the janitors' fault at all, they work really hard to keep our school as clean as it is. They just don't really like have all the resources that they need in order to do that.
Okay.
Especially with staffing and stuff.
Okay.
But they do work really hard, and they keep a lot of the school clean, it's just the bathrooms are like already a not-so-clean place, and it's just a challenge, especially.
Okay, and I'll have to read, you said it's an insight?
Yeah.
And, and the people who should be aware of this are aware of?
Yeah, and like I said, I don't mean this in a bad way, I'm trying to help you, we're trying to help you guys out, like get the word out, that's, that's what needs to happen. So, with your first meeting, like you've met and you're kind of all talking about it, like, has any, has any, was the principal invited to that meeting, or any adults invited to that meeting, do you know?
So, with, yeah, so the leaders of like National Honor Society and the advisors for each class?
Okay.
Were present.
Okay.
And they all gave their feedback as well, and then student council likes to work closely with Principal Friedman.
Okay, excellent. That's what, that's, yeah, cool. That's what I want to kind of, just so it doesn't just fall on deaf ears, and it keeps going, has feet behind it and keeps moving.
And then she's also super busy, so whenever there's a standstill, one of us always reaches out again to make sure nothing like gets lost in the cracks.
Yep, excellent. Yeah, so I guess either they, they kind of do, sounds like, sounds like it's kind of gone up the line. So, Andre, you have anything, any questions or anything? Are you good, or Kathy?
Nice job, it's good. Paloma?
Yes.
Good to see you, first meeting, and I like, we had a reference from the Barnstable Insight, a reference to the school newspaper out there doing some pioneering journalism, so it's good to hear the things that are going on, and we have some things to work on, and most certainly, we will be working on those things. You can't work on a problem if you don't know that it exists, so it's good to hear about those things, and also a credit to our custodial staff that does yeoman's work. But it is an issue that we can refine and improve on, so we'll make efforts there. It's good to hear about homecoming, good school spirit, and we'll be talking a little bit more. We have one volleyball match that's gonna be a beginning in about 40 minutes, you know, at Oliver Ames, and then we have some other events, so student athletes doing well, mathletes are doing well, we like to hear about it.
Excellent, anything else? Okay, thank you very much, you guys can get out of here. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you, have a good night. I'm now gonna turn, I'm gonna add something, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Kathy.
So, I would like to take a moment of silence in memory of Cheyenne Schaff, one of our Barnstable or Media School students who passed last weekend. And our thoughts and prayers go out to her family.
Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to 3.2, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes for October 4, 2023.
Move to approved school committee meeting minutes for October 4, 2023.
I'll second.
Having an emotion of second and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 3.3, Approved School Committee Town Council Joint Meeting Minutes for October 19, 2023.
Move to approved school committee town council joint meeting minutes for October 19, 2023.
I'll second.
Having an emotion of second and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.4, Approved Special School Committee Meeting Minutes for October 24, 2023.
26.
October 26.
Yeah, 26. Move to approved special school committee meeting minutes for October 26, 2023.
I'll second.
Having an emotion of second and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.5, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual, and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement and/or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his or her discretion during the meeting. Having said that, I will now open public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, I will now close public comment. Moving on to 3.6, School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. I'll open that up.
Yeah, I don't have much to add tonight, except that I've really been enjoying Barnstable Sports lately, as was noted earlier, both attending the volleyball games and attending and watching on YouTube the football games. Both teams have provided fabulous entertainment as they continue to advance through the playoffs. And in fact, after watching the latest debacle from the New England Patriots last weekend, I believe the BHS team.
They had to go there.
A few things about how to run an offense, I'll tell you, so congrats and good luck to our teams.
Andre, I'll have you go last?
Sure.
We'll have you go last. Kathy?
So, I have a couple things. First, I want to congratulate John Cullum, who will be joining us as a school committee member after the swearing-in next week. Policy Subcommittee is next, the next meeting is Friday, December 8, at 1:00 PM via Zoom. Last weekend, I attended the District 7 MASC meeting. We are one of the schools in District 7. That was the first time I went to one of the district meetings. It was great to have conversation with our school, with the schools who are on, school committee members from all the schools who are representing the Cape and Islands. The goal for next year is to have better communication among the districts. They're going to be sending each school committee member a survey to find out how District 7 can support all of the districts. I'd like to recognize our colleague Andrew King and his work with the People of Action Organization, which was recently given a proclamation at the November 2nd Town Council Meeting. And my final comment, I once again went to the play last week, the name is escaping me, but you know, it, I always think that they're not going to one-up themselves, and then there's a better production out there. The lighting and the sound effects were unbelievable, and it's just such a fun event to go to. I want to congratulate Mary Barth, who directs these. I'm sure she puts in long hours, especially given that she's not teaching at the high school, she's at BIS, I believe. So, she's got very long days putting, putting these productions together, but is, is there another weekend of it, or was that it? No?
That was the only weekend, and it was Haunting We Will Go.
Haunting We Will Go, it was really great, really great, so. That's it.
Okay, I just got a couple things. So, senior update, just for parents out there who have a senior, I, so you can do, yearbook is open, to be able to purchase the yearbook, and then you also can do cap and gown. To be honest with you, the yearbook, I did it through, we got an email probably about a month ago, and I had to go through my archives to find the, the yearbook one, and then the cap and gown, I did it through MyBox, which is through the old one we used for student lunches, so you can do both of those now, they're open. I don't remember getting an email about caps and gowns, but I went on it just because I was doing the yearbook, and I know you could, I ordered it at the same time, so those are open now. The Celebration, which is the after-prom party, has started up their meetings, it's, was this past Monday, so what's that, the third Monday of the month, it's Junior Senior CAF at 6:00 PM. It's getting to be that time where it's already starts getting ready for the Celebration, the after-prom party. They are looking for, just to put it out in the public, I'm gonna do this a lot, the folks that are running it, this is their last year, so after this year, somebody has to step up in order to take Celebration, this is its 30th year. So, anybody who graduated from high school, maybe not us older folk, but some, it's been going on for 30 years, so the people that are running it, it are, this is the last year, so anybody in the community, if anybody knows anybody who's interested, who has a younger, a younger child, if they want to like take over, it's probably best, there's a lot that goes into it, I think there's about, there's just a lot that goes into it, so it's best to kind of shadow the person, the people running it for that year, so that like you just kind of get the dates and who you talk to and all that, there's, there's binders and binders, I think I have seven, I think in our house, there's seven binders, so it's all, a lot of it's written down, but if anybody's interested in taking it over, or anybody knows anybody, because everybody's always like, well, yeah, no, it'll just keep going, and as less people take it over, it won't keep going, so it's something that, it's just crazy, the amount of support that this community gives to our kids in general, but then that is just the amount that businesses and people do is just crazy, so please, like, we don't want this to die, it's safe and sober, it keeps the kids safe on, on prom night, so if anybody knows anybody, please reach out. You can reach out to me, or you can reach out to Celebration, they have a Facebook page, I think an Instagram page, so don't hesitate to reach out. With that, I will turn it over to Andre.
Thank you, Mike. As we say, Barnstable is a, is a large, it's diverse, and it's a dynamic district, and we had an extra week or two in between our last meeting, so there's quite a bit to report. Sarah, do you have the clicker, or Mo, you, oh, Mo, you got it. Okay, so we'll work together, because we, we have quite a, quite a few things. So, this is Ms. St. Orange's class at Hyannis West Elementary that's studying Native American culture, next slide. So, the students played a game called Hubbub, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, and learned about our local Native American cultures, the Wampanoah Tribe and others, next slide. So, again, this is at Hyannis West Elementary, Mrs. St. Orange's class, who I was fortunate to go to school with, graduated the year behind me, her brother two years after that, next slide. And they're learning about Native American culture, next slide. Okay, we're staying at Hyannis West Elementary School, where we had a walk-a-thon a couple Fridays ago, next slide. Students, staff members got out, we had beautiful weather, something like Indian summer before this cold weather set in, next slide. All right, and getting out, moving around beautiful sports fields, and this was the walk-a-thon at Hyannis West Elementary, next slide. Okay, if you can believe it, I'm not sure, but already 50 days of school? 50 days of school already, and the students at West Villages Elementary celebrated by coming out in their 50's gear, next slide. So, they, they, we're turning the clocks back, they haven't read The Outsiders yet, they will read The Outsiders eventually, and that book will have a tremendous impact, next slide. But they were styling, profiling, 50th day of school, just like that, at West Villages celebrating, next slide, with the styles, as you can see, next slide. Okay, moving over to Barnstable United Elementary School, this is Ms. Batson Heath and Ms. Ray's class, they're participating in Pumpkin Math, next slide. math. Next slide. Okay, so we had pumpkins, we had Oreo cookies, learning about the universe, the solar system. Next slide. All right, everyone having a snack, participating, getting engaged. I'm seeing a lot, had the privilege of working with Ms. Ray at the intermediate school. Next slide. Okay, and speaking of vision of a graduate, already looking forward to the, to the end of the journey. This is Ms. Batson Heath and Ms. Ray's class and they're learning pumpkin math. Not my strong suit. I was an English history person, so I'm sure they would have quite a few things to instruct me upon. Next slide. Also at the Barnstable United Elementary School, we were fortunate to have visitors from Bosnia, a few of which stopped by Open Gym. Next slide. And so the students out there on the fields, participating with the students at BUES. Again, foreign exchange students. Next slide. Coming, coming in from Bosnia, spending time with the, with the students at BUES. And it was great to see them at, again, a number of different points in the community, Open Gym, so on and forth. Next slide. Okay, we're going to move over to Barnstable Intermediate School where we had project-based learning, okay? And not just one activity, this is poetry and pizza. We have a local artist and activist, Robin Joyce Miller, a retired teacher, coming in and reading some poetry with her husband. That's her husband there in the back. Next slide. And so they read poetry, they made masks. This is a two-fold project-based learning event. Next slide. Okay, we're not going to hold back on the pizza part. Okay, this is projects, poetry and pizza. So the students got a chance to enjoy some of the pizza, which is, as a person myself that grew up on school lunch, school pizza was delicious. We used to only get it on Fridays. Apparently they have it more days, which I like to see. So this is poetry and pizza at Barnstable Intermediate School. Next slide. And so the other part was a community garden that the students had the opportunity to participate in. Again, get out, get some fresh air, get away from the flickering images and the devices. Next slide. And so these were the students, again, the second part of the project-based learning that were looking at a, a, a community garden. Next slide. Okay, we're going to move over to the high school. We had 130 students that read Arthur Miller's The Crucible. These are students that are more brave than myself. I don't celebrate spooky season. I don't celebrate, but I'm not, I'm not for the Halloween and I can't do all of these, these movies. But these students have more courage than their school committee member, Mr. King. Next slide. So they went up to Salem. They, they, they saw a play, participating in the culture. I know this time of the year, that, that city in particular is, is jumping a lot going on. Next slide. And so we had, as I see, over 100 students. Good to see our educators, Mr. Shea and such, over there in, in the corner. And that went up to Salem to take part in plays and all of the festivities that take place during this time of the year in conjunction with them reading Arthur Miller's The Crucible. Next slide. Okay, through a generous donation of the Cobb Trust, the Coastal Ecology Program class, got a chance to visit the Stony Grist Mill. Next slide. Also got a chance to visit the Cape Cod Museum of Natural History. Apologize if I didn't get that, that name, that name correct. Next slide. But again, through the charitable donation of the Enot Cobb Trust Fund, students in our ecology class were able to, to visit Brewster and get some on-hand, in-person learning. We're now at the high school. Next slide. Okay, this was the business, entrepreneurial and finance program at the high school that, that's having a mentorship program that's going to be meeting, I believe, on a, on a monthly basis with our students. Next slide. I don't have all of the businesses, I apologize, in advance. But again, the business, entrepreneurial and finance program doing some mentorship for our business leaders of the future. Next slide. And that's taking place at the high school. The Barnstable Art Program, the displays are full and, and you're seeing the, the work of our, our art program. Next slide. And these are their first semester, second semester projects. Next slide. And again, we have the displays there. We, we want to utilize them. I, again, have limited artistic ability. As you can tell, I, I will talk your ear off and we're going to bring this to a conclusion soon. I'll talk your ear off, but very limited artistic ability. Next slide. And so seeing the, the work of our art students was and is, and is wonderful. This happened, again, it's a month and a half of events. I, I know I'm going on, but, but there was just so much that happened. So the No Hate Tour came to, came to Barnstable High School. Next slide. We, we see they did the high-flying dirt bike activities. Next slide. And Mrs. Wojcikowski was brave enough to get out there, out front and, and No Hate Tour doing their flips, so on and forth. So it was a No Hate Tour. I don't believe I covered this, but I believe this happened after our last meeting. And so I just wanted to, to touch on this before we move over to athletics. Next slide. Okay, and so we got about 20 minutes. Our girls' team i- is up in, at Oliver Ames tonight. I don't mind telling the community that they can watch this game live. Number of links, you can go to the MIAA Instagram page. They have the link if you want to watch the game live. But Peter and myself were, were there on Saturday for their game against Andover. Tremendous. They won in straight sets. Andover, a well-coached team, fought hard, but it was wonderful. The student section was packed, the gym was packed, and the team, they shined bright under those lights, advancing all the way to the, to the final four. Again, that's tonight against Franklin High School, a rematch. They met Franklin last year, I believe, in the Elite Eight. And so one more game to advance to the, to the state champion. Next slide. Okay, we have another team that's playing tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, at Waymouth High School, our football program. A big win on the road at Peabody, 13 to 9, gave up zero points in the second half. Just tremendous. And so they also have advanced to the final four. Again, that's tomorrow at 6 o'clock because, as I understand it, Peabody's playing their Thanksgiving Day game on a Tuesday. That's why they have to, yeah, so they have to play on, on a Thursday, which is unusual, but our, 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 our team is going, is going to be ready. And so we're, we're just tremendously proud of our, of our student athletes that, that are, that are representing Barnstable at the highest level. Next slide. Our girls' cross-country team this Saturday will be in the Division One State Championship. The entirety of the team has qualified for the state championship. That's Saturday in, the name, the, the exact location escapes me. I apologize.
Devens. It's up in Devens.
Devens. Thank you, Mike. Our, our girls' cross-country team will be competing in the, in the state championship. And in conclusion, thank you, Mo. Last slide. Jackson Merrill will be representing individually our boys' cross-country team in the state championship. As you can see, Jackson has committed to Stone Hill College. He will be competing at the Division One level. And again, our student athletes, our mathletes, we're a large, we're a dynamic and we're a diverse district and there's a lot of great things going on and we'd love to see it. Thank you.
Excellent job as always, Andre. Good job. That was complete. Hey, that just shows all the stuff that happens in a month in our schools. It's just that crazy. And thank you to everybody who's participating and helping with all that stuff. I will now open, I will, 3.7 superintendent's report. Sarah?
Thank you. It's always a tough act to follow. There's so many amazing things. I want to share with everybody that today is National Educational Support Professional Day. We celebrate our paraprofessionals, school assistants, teaching assistants, personal care assistants and instructional assistants, as well as our related services, related services assistants today, with an extra special shout-out for the relationships they develop with students and families and the support they provide in classrooms and throughout the day. Thank them for all that they do. I want to take a moment to update the committee and the community related to a big effort happening at Barnstable High School, which is through the Barr Foundation and a grant that we've received called Meaning the Moment. I had shared a little bit with, with you about this last spring and in the summer when we applied for the grant, but the depth of work through various phases and activities is really coming to life now. And so I want to give you a brief update. Right now, as we speak, there is a team up in Beverly at the Endicott College Wiley Conference Center at the second three-day convening as part of the learn phase of the grant. Learning is happening at this time, really taking a deep dive to understand what the student experience is at Barnstable High School. The data that's collected then sets the stage for the dream in terms of some, some work to reimagine the high school experience for students and then a planning phase. Although I think some things are happening concurrently at the same time as we've talked about a new high school schedule, for example. It's work that's aligned with our vision of a graduate at the highest level. You heard a little bit about some of that alignment work happening K to 3. And there are a variety of faculty and staff and students working together through this phase to consider the student learning experience. There was a three-day convening in the summer, in July, to kick off, kick off the work with the steering committee, who came back and established a visioning team. There's about, want to say about 15 people on that visioning team, members of our faculty, members of our staff, and also student representatives. Recently, members of this visioning team shadowed students for an entire day. I had the pleasure of following a student's schedule for an entire day back at the end of October. And all told, 17 students were shadowed by their peers or by members of the faculty and staff, again, to get a broad picture and a broad understanding of what the student experience is like really, really deeply. We had some consultants from a group called Spring Point visit the high school. They met focus groups of students and focus groups of educators. They visited classrooms and reviewed data and considered what they saw against indicators of school quality, including a coherent mission, positive school and classroom culture, rigorous and purposeful learning experience, academic systems, student supports, college and career planning, and strategic development and use of resources. Perhaps one of the more public areas of this learn phase is a survey that has gone out and the data has just been received by the high school team. The Youth Truth Survey was sent to students, faculty and staff and families. And like I had mentioned, we're just receiving that data. They were working on it today as part of the convening. The survey looked at areas, including but not limited to those stakeholders' feelings of belonging, the school culture and climate, and perceptions of academic challenge, and then some. We have a great opportunity to extend this survey pre-K to 7, and that will be happening in December as we roll out the Youth Truth Survey elsewhere in the district and piggyback on the work at the high school. Fortunately, with the Barr Foundation Grant, we get some additional PD through the Youth Truth Organization in terms of making meaning from this data. The team is currently planning to connect school visits at model schools to continue to learn based on our understanding of the student experience and come up with plans to reimagine the high school experience from the student perspective going forward. So that's just a brief update, want to share a little bit with you. I will say, I want to thank the student that I shadowed. It really was very eye-opening to be a student again for the day. I had the pleasure of attending biology. I aced that test, by the way. Had the pleasure of attending biology, culinary arts, PE, which was team sports. I started my day in US History 1. I attended advisory and I'm blanking on one. Nope, I didn't have math. Math and English dropped for that day. I had Spanish. So that was my schedule, but not in that order. It was in a slightly different order. And I had the fortune of stopping by the culinary room at lunch. I was on my way to the cafeteria and they had pizza that the students had made. So I got, I squirted some pizza. I wanted to share a little bit with you about recent PD that I had going to the MASC/MASS joint conference I attended last Thursday, November 9. I attended a session to hear an important legal update from the MASC/MASS attorneys on recent case law and arbitrations. I went to the special education update that was hosted by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on the new IEPs that will be rolled out next year. Our co-directors attended a special convening in October with Desi and are planning PD for our special education staff this spring and all staff going into next fall. And I attended the keynote speaker with, who was Darnisa Amanti-Jackson, who is just tremendous. I've seen her a number of times and I'm always, always impressed. And she spoke to school committee members and superintendents about her framework of belonging. And in her framework of belonging, it centers, and I love this, as we all should given our mission around the instructional core and the interaction between teachers, students and the curriculum. I will not repeat some of the other things that were mentioned, but I do want to congratulate the 29 students who were inducted on October 26 to the National High, the National Honor Society at Barnstable High School as part of the fall induction, recognizing their scholarship, character, leadership and service. And I also wanted to share that we had two recent college fairs held at Barnstable High School. We had the All Cape College Fair on Wednesday, October 18. There were over 140 colleges, military academies and technical schools represented with an estimated 500 students from across the Cape and Islands in attendance. And I want to also recognize Hope Taylor and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, who brought the first historically black college and university college fair to Barnstable High School this past Saturday, November 4. There were several historically black colleges and universities represented. Four Cs attended to discuss new legislation that expands opportunities for college at, at community colleges and state universities. And community organizations such as the Zion Heritage Museum, the Y Achievers and the Cape Cod NAACP also were there to support our students. So that was the first of what we hope is an annual opportunity at Barnstable High School. And lastly, I will conclude by thanking Mrs. Bohannon at High West. Today I had the pleasure of reading in her grade-two classroom. I read a book called Do You Speak Fish? And this was one that was selected wholeheartedly by the students in the class. And it was about language and the value in learning to speak in different languages and communicate and understand and the power that language has to expand our entire world. So it was really quite a pleasure. And thank you, Mrs. Bohannon. Thank you, Mrs. Motto, and the students in that grade-two class.
That kind of, my book in, in the, I was in Ms. Lowe's class, third grade class. It was about a little girl who loved chocolate and turned into chocolate. Kind of a little different than your book. Okay, any questions? Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to 3.8 Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. All right. So to start off, as a reminder, pre-K, well, we have parent conferences coming up. As a reminder, pre-K to 3 schools will be holding parent conferences on the afternoons of December 5 and December 7. These will be half-days for our K3 students on these two days and afternoon pre-school classes are canceled on these dates. Parent conferences for grades four and seven are scheduled for the afternoons of December 12 and December 14. So this is a change from last year. We've split up the parent conference days across two weeks. And again, this will be a half-day for BUS, BUES and BIS students on these two afternoons. But also in order to accommodate as many families as possible, all schools pre-K through 7 will also be offering parent conferences in the evening on these days and in some cases are offering additional times during the week and following weeks. So schools will be reaching out to families with more information regarding the available dates and times for parent conferences. My regular GLEAM update. So reminder that GLEAM is our growing literacy equity across Massachusetts. And so this is the work that we're doing as we work to identify is the work that we're doing as we work to identify high-quality instructional materials in early literacy and K-5, at the K-5 level. So since our last school committee meeting, the GLEAM team has continued to meet regularly. The GLEAM team consists of district administrators, K-5 principals, and K-5 educators with representation from each school, grade level, special education, and English learner educators. In our most recent meetings, the group established criteria for reviewing high-quality curriculum materials using our local context, resources from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Ed Reports, the Washington Model for Bias, and Culturally Responsive Curriculum Scorecard. All of these were used to develop the following criteria for our first pass-through on the available curriculum materials. We are committed to our materials being culturally responsive, explicit structured foundational skills and systematic phonics, complex rigorous texts, high-quality texts, English language component and embedded SEI strategies, multi-tiered and inclusive of EL, special ed, and interventions, and includes a writing component. One of the phrases that we've been saying over and over again is, you know, we're looking for a unicorn, which we know doesn't exist, so we really need to find that strong horse that's really going to have as much as we possibly can related to these criteria. Using this criteria, the members of the GLEAM team worked in small groups to take a deep dive into one of seven programs that had been identified to review the reports and sample materials against the established criteria. They also reached out to districts currently using the curriculum materials. They compiled all of this information and reported out to the larger GLEAM team in an effort to narrow the field to three or four programs. And so we're kind of right in the middle of making that final determination. The next step, once those three and four programs have been identified, will be to reach out to publishers to get samples of the materials for each school to review. Staff will have time to, they'll have time with the resources, you know, to look through, not necessarily, not for implementation, but just to get a feel for, you know, what the various components, and spend a little time with the materials. And then staff will be asked to complete a survey to provide their thoughts on each of the programs as to whether or not we need, we should be investigating these further through a pilot, which we're planning to start that in late January, early February. I guess that's all I have for GLEAM team, or GLEAM. Yeah.
So how many programs will be piloted?
We are thinking it's going to be two. There might be three. It just depends on what we come back with. But it's, we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to explore, you know, a few so that there's, you know, really experience the materials in the classroom setting.
When you do the pilot, I know we had a grant last year that they were piloted for a very quick amount of time, not enough time for the teachers to figure out if it was worth spending money on. How long will they be piloting? When do you figure the piloting will actually start, and how long do you think it'll go on for?
So we've really been working with the consultants to try and kind of accelerate us into that, so we should be starting our pilot by the end of January and looking for at least two months and hopefully a little bit more. But it's still tight because we have timelines in terms of the selection, the purchase, and all of that because of the grant timeline.
Is this all, the GLEAM grant, is that to get a new program in place for next school year? Okay.
Yep, yes. And so
That's
Once we've identified our new curriculum resources, the plan is to, on the May half-day would be kind of an implementation kickoff.
And one other question, just so when you do the, what was I going to say? So the pilot will be happening for two months. I forget what I was going to say. It's okay, forget it. I'll remember it at some point.
At the end of the comments.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so then we had a half-day in service day on November 1st. Continuing the theme, our K-5 staff continued their participation in the Literacy PD to support evidence-based instructional strategies that will not only support the implementation of our curriculum that we select at the end of this process that are adopted through the GLEAM grant, but these strategies can also be applied using our existing resources, ensuring that students continue to have access to strong academic instruction while we're progressing through the curriculum adoption process. Also during the in-service, our paraprofessional staff participated in PD modules through Master Teacher. This is something new that we've been able to use this year. Paraprofessional staff are able to self-select modules, usually an hour in length, ranging from topics on supporting English learners, general instructional supports, behavior management, special education, classroom support, just to name a few. We also offered a session for paraprofessional staff to hear from Cape Cod Community College about Mass Reconnect, free community college for staff who meet, well, and not just staff, for anyone, who meets certain criteria. To be, you must be at least 25 years of age or older, have been a resident of the Commonwealth for at least one year at the point of enrollment, already be enrolled or plan to enroll in a Massachusetts Public Community College, and have not previously received an associate or bachelor's degree. And while we had just a few people in attendance, the handful of people who did participate found the session very helpful and were really appreciative of the information. We have continued to share information out to staff about this opportunity as it can really lead to part of a pathway for licensure for our paraprofessionals. So we continue to share that through the superintendent's newsletter, and we're looking for ways to share this even more broadly outside of staff to families as well. And then my last two, I had the absolute pleasure, right before this meeting, of attending the first Unified Basketball Jamboree at High School. And so this afternoon, BHS hosted five districts from across the Cape. The afternoon included opening ceremonies, friendly competition, a lot of cheering and celebration, and a whole host of photo ops. So I hope maybe at the next meeting, Andre, I'll maybe put some slides together with pictures from this. But a few of the highlights included the Olympic torch being walked in by two BHS students, the national anthem being sung by a high school student, which I'm sorry, I don't have her name. It was amazing. And the Dennis Yarmouth team was awarded the League Team Sportsmanship Award, which was just amazing, which they dedicated to Principal Paul Funk. So it was very, really nice. And yes, so I hope to have some pictures to share at the next meeting. It was incredible, and I just have to say kudos to Coach Ellen and Coach Mandy. This is only the second year of the program, and the, it is just, it's amazing. And then finally, I would just like to give a shout out to Mr. Howard's second-grade class. I was a guest reader today. They were full of questions. My book of choice was The Little Fisherman, and they were really, they were great. I couldn't believe how many questions, and we had a lot of fun with the book, so we had a good fish theme going today. Thank you.
I just have my, I figured out my question. So when you said piloting, I know this grant is for K through five, so is it going to, which schools are going to pilot? Is it going to pilot in all of them? Or like, is one program going to be in one school, like certain schools, and the other program being in certain schools? Are you going to have certain grades due? How are you thinking that's going to work?
The plan is to do the pilot similar as to we did previously, which would be piloting in each of the elementary schools at every grade level, you know, representation from each grade level, just because every school's a little bit different. The only school that's not participating is the Barnstable Community Innovation School, where they already have the Wonders program in place. That's their program, and they have autonomy over their curriculum resources. But we will be piloting, you know
It depends on how many there I get it.
Either two or three, but each school would have exposure to
Each of the programs. Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.1. Approved field trip request to the Marine Biology Laboratory in Woods Hole, February 20th through 22nd, 2024. Ms. Karen, come on down. Hi, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Excellent.
This is our third year of attending at MBL. We go over February vacation. We will leave Tuesday morning and come back Thursday afternoon. We bring 16 students, which are, students fill out an interest form, they complete a little essay of why they'd want to go, and then we look for teacher recommendation. It's open for juniors and seniors. We, I've told the kids, or we, I haven't told them everything yet because we don't have approval yet, but that kids who did not go, kids who haven't gone before would have first chance, kids who weren't, because I do have some seniors who went last year that do want to go again. This year's program is microbial symbiosis in aquatic environments. So the kids stay there, they live in the dormitory, they in Swope, they work in the labs all day, they go to lectures, they tour the, a lot of the other facilities over at MBL. It's an awesome program. It's for the third year, and unfortunately, the last year totally covered by grants through MBL. It's $1,400 a student, and everything's paid for. The kids, all they have to bring is their clothes. I mean, all their food, everything. They don't need anything. They live in the dorm, sheets, towels, everything. So hopefully, MBL is going to figure out a way to keep this going. It's been an anonymous donor, and that program is up. So they are working on other sources. If they can't, hopefully, we can do something. It's a lot. $1,400 for three days is expensive, and we've been very fortunate to bring an extremely diverse group of kids, many of whom would not have been able to go. So hopefully, they're going to be able to continue this program.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Andre.
No, except for it's a terrific program, and, you know, I hope it does continue.
I do too. I do.
You just echo those sentiments. I just have one question. Somebody, I get a chance to go to Woods Hole in the summer. Again, I'm an English history person, so I don't have the competency of the students or yourself in the sciences, but it's just a remarkable area and institution. I'm just curious if our students are seeing themselves as possibly one day working at Woods Hole, or possibly, you know, doing, strengthening those connections, you know, with such a esteemed organization, you know, that they can see themselves, you know, in different capacities, you know, at Woods Hole.
We had a student who went two years ago, Nora Penny, who actually came back and did the
Yeah, yep.
Highlights in education for you all. She's working on applying to do an internship there. So the kids, I mean, it's changed a lot of the kids' minds about what they
It's funny, because I remember, literally, I remember the last two years when it came, kids came back and talked about it, like, it's funny how you remember certain ones, and I remember both years that when they came back and talked about the, what they did.
It's quite an experience, I mean.
Yeah. Any other questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the field trip request to the Marine Biological Laboratory in Woods Hole, February 20 to 22, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion, second of all, it's vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. I just have it unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I hope to see you all Friday at Credit for Life at the high school.
Oh, yes, yes. Credit for Life in the morning. Yes, I'll be there.
All morning. Yep. If any chance you have to stop in, that would be great. And Andre, we have a robotics club that's competing that we got to get on your
There you go. Challenge accepted. I told you, Andre. I told you it was going to take off. 4.2 MCAS Results 2023. Sarah and Kristen.
Okay, so we are presenting the MCAS results to you in two stages. Kristen is grabbing the clicker to get set up here, but tonight we'll share with you the MCAS scores from 2023. This year, we have the return of the full accountability results and full accountability measures. Because this is a large quantity of data, we thought we would break it up into two, with the MCAS results being shared with you tonight, a preview about accountability insofar as my goal for student learning is centered around accountability, so we wanted to touch upon it to some extent. And then we'll do a deeper dive in accountability, particularly as it relates to our different schools and subgroups showcasing some areas of highlight as well as opportunities at the December meeting. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Kristen, who has kindly put this together with the help of our data specialist, Mo Lovett, and is a similar format to last year's MCAS presentation.
Yes, so thank you to Mo, and I'll just share again, we were using largely our platform of Open Architect, which has been wonderful, and we have it right now through the state for free, and hoping it stays that way, and we may build off of that in the future. So a little, a quick background. So if you recall, we started last year the same way, just a reminder, but we're moving up a year. We had 2020 where MCAS was paused, 2021, MCAS was modified. Last year, we had the full MCAS, and this year, again, this past year, 23, we had the full MCAS as well, which, as Sarah said, this is the, allows this full return of the accountability data, which we will dig in deeply in December. So some trends that, both across the straight state and also, but also what we saw, so we had math scores are trending, evidence of recovery, this is the same what the state is seeing as well. And, you know, as you can see from here, and what you'll see in the slides, is that in many areas, many grade levels, the district was improving at a quicker rate, a larger rate than the state in most areas in math. And then the state is always comparing us back, and we'll talk more about this with accountability, but we always compare back to pre-pandemic. And so how are we getting, moving forward and towards those pre-pandemic rates? So we are still below our pre-pandemic, say that five times fast, achievement from 2019, so that our gaps are ranging from about 5% to, in some cases, 20 percentage points. And for ELA, again, largely on par with the state trends, except for grade seven and 10 again. So some digging into that data, we'll definitely be looking for how we can focus our energies there. And again, still performing below pre-pandemic achievement. So we'll start with grade three. So our, we, the data that we start with is looking at the percent of students proficient, which is meeting or exceeding benchmarks. And so for grade three, we had 44% of our students that were proficient, which is flat with the prior year, so we didn't see that increase over the prior year. And however, in math, we were actually five percentage points above our performance last year, which is also four percentage points over the state average. In both cases, the state for ELA and grade three, they had zero, they were flatlined from the previous year, so the state average in ELA. And grade three for math, the state was also zero percentage increase, so flatlined from the prior year. So we were on par with grade three, but in math, we saw greater increases than the state did. And so then we dig a little bit, and I'm not sure why my text is behind, but on the left side, we have ELA, and so this is the comparison of our elementary schools and looking at the percent proficient for ELA. And at least you can see the data for the math on the right-hand side, again, the percent proficient by elementary school. The vertical line through is the state average proficiency. And then looking over time, and I realize this, the colors, again, using Open Architect, it's tricky that we can't change the colors on the graph, so I'll try and point out which is which. There's, even, it's difficult to see largely. But that top line is West Villages, the top blue line. And then there's a really light gray curved line is Centerville. The purple line is BWB, and the lower curved blue line is BCIS. The dotted line, the dark dotted line, is the state, and actually, it is not showing up on this, there's a lower blue line, light blue line, that is Hyannis West. If you're seeing it on your slides on your screen, I think you can see it, it's just the large, okay. So this is looking at those trends over time. So this is looking at those trends over time, so again, trying to get back to the pre-pandemic, which would be looking at 2019, and looking at, you know, here, individually, at the schools, like, they are starting to see that return in many cases back to that level. Again, I apologize, it's really hard to see on the the big screen. And so unfortunately, we'll see the same with the, hard to read with the colors, but again, the, in this case, the top blue line is West Villages, and then Centerville is the next line below, BWB, the dark dotted line is state, the lighter blue is West Villages, and you can barely see on the big screen, Hyannis West. And so again, looking, tracking over to the left, where 2019 hits, if you, you know, visually scan across, trying to see horizontally, we are starting to approach those pre-pandemic rates in most of our third grade assessments. So we are really seeing, we're seeing the the recovery. I would also say, if you can kind of draw your attention to the dark dotted line, the state average, again, as I had mentioned, and since we're on the math, that they had flatlined, so you can see from the 2022 to the 2023, it it looks like a horizontal line, they've flatlined in terms of their their change in proficiency. But you can see, you know, I'll just pick BWB, for example, so the purple line, so you're seeing that that has an increasing trajectory. So we're seeing these positive trajectories where the state is seeing just a flat line. Moving on to grade four, so we have our proficiency for grade four in ELA, this is two percentage points above the previous year, while still below, 9% below the state average, and I'll add that the state saw a two percentage point increase over last year as well, so we trended the same rate as EL, as the state in ELA. And in math, grade four, we saw a nine percentage point increase from the previous year, while we're still 13% below the state average, but the state was looking at an increase of three percentage points over last year. So again, going to the graphs, so look at that graphically. On the left with the ELA, this is for grade four, and so both Barnstable and the state saw an increase of the two percentage points over the previous year, so you can see that that 2022 to 2023, that those really are parallel, because we're seeing that same change from the prior year. When we get to the math, where Barnstable is at a nine percentage point increase, where the state only saw a three percentage point increase, we're seeing, obviously, a much different trajectory and and starting to close that gap between Barnstable and the Moving on to grade five. Barnstable saw a nine percentage point increase in ELA, where the state saw a three percentage point increase. And for math, we saw a six percent, six percentage point increase, which actually mirrored the state, except I feel like that number might be elevated, but let's look at the graph and see what that shows us. So if we look at ELA, you can see from 2022 to 2023, that change in the trajectory and actually that closing of that gap, as we start to to bring our blue line up to the dotted black line. And then in the math, looking at that graph, does look like they have just about the same slope, so we probably did increase at the same. I just didn't remember that number being that high for the state. So again, we had that six percentage point increase, which was on par with the state, although I think graphically, it looks a little closer. And then grade six, again, trending higher than the state, we saw a three percentage point increase, where the state in ELA only saw one percentage point, and for math, we had a five percentage point increase, and the state only saw a one percentage point increase over last year. And again, not to say we still are below the state average, but again, graphically, we are starting to close that, the distance between the state representation, the multi-year over time, and the districts' scores over time, so we're starting to bring those two lines closer together. And then with seventh grade, I had pointed out with the kind of patterns and trends, that we had two areas, seventh grade and 10th grade, so you can see here with the seventh grade data, we saw a decrease, so this was one of the grade levels where we saw a decrease in our percent proficient in both ELA and math. So while we saw that decrease in both areas, the state saw a one percentage point increase in both ELA and math over the previous year. And so what you'll see graphically, obviously, when we look at that, is, in this case, not the direction we want to go, we see that gap getting wider. So digging into both curriculum and instruction and looking at how we can close that gap. Grade eight, so we had a four percentage point increase in ELA, the state is, had a two percentage point increase, and for math, we saw a 3% increase over the previous year, and the state was at 2%. So again, as this, as I'd mentioned, you know, the state is saying that we're in kind of recovery, starting to see that recovery, particularly in math, but in ELA as well, but math is coming on a little stronger. And then finally, looking at grade 10, again, an area that we need to dig more deeply into, we saw the decrease in both ELA and math in grade 10, the state saw no change from the previous year, so they, the state stayed flat, and Barnstable saw that decrease. And then I'm going to go into science, and then I'll pause if there's any questions. So science proficiency, science, as you recall, is given in fifth and eighth grade, and then we also offer it in ninth and 10th grade, depending, because it's course-based. So grade five, we saw a bit of a decrease in the percent proficient, our grade eight starting to see some recovery with the six percentage points over the prior year, and then in grades nine and 10, our content-based or course-based assessments seeing a 5% increase over the previous year. And I know, Peter, you had asked last year about the breakdown of the actual science tests for the high schools, so for this year, we have biology and physics are the two that are given the most, we did not include the data for the technology and engineering, because it's only one student, so we wouldn't want to do that. So you can see that there are 318 students that are taking biology, and 32 taking physics, and these are the percent, percentages at each of the performance levels. So in biology, we had 5% of our students were exceeding, 39% were meeting, 39% were partially meeting, and 17 were not meeting, so just to orient you to the to the graph. And similarly with physics, the distribution across the four ratings as well. So I was going to pause there for a minute before moving into student growth, to see if there were any questions, or do you want me to just continue?
Yeah, I'll save it to the end.
Okay.
So you can continue.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions? Kathy?
Well, you know, I
Go ahead.
I just have noted that between 2018 and 2019, the scores had decreased, so ideally, we want to get back to a level that's prior to 2018, even though the state is comparing to pre-pandemic in 2019, we started dipping before that. So that's just one thing that I I'm concerned about, and it's just a note that I've made.
Yep, and I'll have to check my my data, but I believe, and so I'm looking at Mo, I believe that that was the year between 18 and 19 is when we transitioned to the online In 2019, we went to online, and I think that that was when we saw that change as well. I think that that was a big shift for students going from the paper assessment to the online. So we should be, students should now be more well-versed in the online assessment, but that is also why we saw that difference between those two years, because I know that that had come up previously.
Right.
Okay, so moving on to student growth percentile, so looking at ELA, if you recall, when we're talking about growth, we really want to be between 40 and 60, that's moderate growth, and that means that our students are, in a year's time, they're making a year's worth of growth. Anything above that 60th percentile means that we're really accelerating learning, and so students are actually growing at more than a year's worth of learning. And then low growth means that that's where, you know, we would see gaps widening. So you can see for our, for ELA, and at the grade levels, grade three, if you recall, does not have a student, the SGP, because you need to have two years of the assessment in order to have the growth percentile calculated. So starting with grade four and up through grade 10 for all students, and then through the subgroup breakdown, seeing the various patterns of growth, where we have the majority in this moderate growth, certainly, some on the low end of the moderate growth, and then in, for special ed, we're seeing a couple, some pockets of lower growth. And then with math, you know, again, we're seeing two grade levels where we need to, again, dig into now looking at growth and progress of students over the, over the year, grade four and grade eight in math, where we're seeing lower growth, but in the grades in between, in the moderate, moderate growth, and some of them trending more towards the higher end of moderate growth. And that is really where we want to be, because that's where we're going to start to see that gap closing accelerated. Oh, sure, sorry.
If I can just take a moment to point out two things about the growth as it relates to the achievement scores, because this was a conversation that came up at the last meeting in terms of growth correlating with achievement, and I had said that it doesn't always necessarily do that. So the first growth chart, I would point to grade seven. Grade seven, growth is actually strong. These students are in the high moderate range, being above 50, some of them around 56 for all students and in the various subgroups, but I would contrast that to the achievement results, which had decreased year over year. So I think this is an example of some of the limitations of the data, which is why they added the growth scores over time, which is that the groups of students being tested year over year, and the test itself changes a little bit from year to year, so the growth scores add an additional window into what is happening for the learners. So I would just point that out as one, as one, one area where the growth is not necessarily correlating exactly with the achievement.
And Sarah, I would just add as well, you know, so when you look at the grade four in math, that was where we had nine percentage point increase over the previous year in terms of our performance, and so again, not see, you know, so there's that kind of disconnect between the growth and the and the proficiency. Okay, so just digging into subgroups a little bit, and again, the way that we had looked at this data last year was kind of that, the comparison of the average scaled score, that gap between English learners and non-English learners, just as a measure to see, you know, where we need to, again, provide extra supports, look at our curriculum, look at our instruction, and so these are separated by school. So this is for ELA, so for each school, the blue dot, which on this, the blue dots all fall on the left, so those are the students that represents the average scaled score for our EL students, and then the gray dot on the right is the average scaled score for our non-EL students, and so that line in the middle represents the gap of those scores. And again, our goal here is to close that gap, to shorten that distance between those two points without, because we can always close that gap, but we want to make sure that we're moving everything to the right, yeah. So that is for ELA.
Can I just ask a question about ELL students? When you, so there's different, just for the public, there's different levels of proficiency in English, so if you have somebody who came who has zero proficiency, they don't know English at all, then all the way up to, was it four or five, is the highest level, right? And then they move, they move out of ELL. Do all kids take MCAS, even if they're level one or don't know any English, and they're taking it, and if so, do they take it in their foreign lang, in their home language, or do they have to take it in English?
So to answer your first question, for ELA, for the ELA test, students have to have been in the country for a year.
Okay.
They don't have that same rule for math. The test is given in English.
For both ELA and for math, it's given in English?
Yes.
Okay. And for ELA, they have to be here for a year, but it doesn't matter on that, on that, what level they are of EL, which rates them how much English they know, more or less, so they could be, still have been here for a year, be at level 1.5, and taking a test in English, even though they only know a little English.
Mm-hmm.
Is that kind of more or less, am I hitting the nail on the head? I mean, I don't know how much more obvious I can make it, but, so we're giving people, we're giving kids a test in English who may know very little English, and the state sees that as wisdom. Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm a retired firefighter, I'm not an educator, but I guess I kind of get it, so why isn't Desi get it, is my question. They don't give it in other languages?
No.
They don't have it in Portuguese or anything else, huh? Interesting, okay, continue, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to make my point.
So then, our math assessment, given in English to all students, so again, we are looking at the average scaled score, the leftmost, and again, in this case, being the blue point, is the EL students compared with the gray on the right, in this case, they're the non-EL. And again, looking to narrow that gap, but also move everything to the right as well. And then taking a look at the SGP, although, you know, again, just another data point, comparing the student growth percentile by our, of our EL students versus our non-EL students, and again, we can see in some schools that we have the, there's not a huge gap, but also looking at where that growth falls, and then I'll just point out, obviously, Barnstable Intermediate School, both of the groups seem to be hovering over the 50 or above in terms of the student growth percentile, which again, means we're trending towards that higher moderate growth, higher level of moderate growth. And then the last slide for EL is the SGP by school for math. I'll also point out here, if you look at the Barnstable Intermediate School graph, we actually have the student growth percentile of our EL students is higher than the student growth percentile of our non-EL students. So we've seen, so we're seeing that inverted, so what we have seen on all the others, Barnstable United, and then again, the high school, comparing the SGP between EL students and And then, we're going to go through the same set of four slides for students with disabilities for ELA, so we have our average scaled score, so we're back to the average scaled score here, and the comparison between here, and the comparison between students with disabilities and non-students without. So again, looking at not only the gap between the two, but also where they land on the graph itself. Certainly wanting to continue to trend more towards the right. Looking at math, again, similar. And I'll just point out, Hyannis West, there's basically no gap, but we also have that our EL students have the higher average scaled score than our non-EL students by a smidge. And for our SGP for ELA, again, looking at that gap between students with disabilities and students without, and their SGP. And then with math.
I noticed that the scale has changed. Is there a reason why the values on the scale has changed between the elementary schools and the high school? If you look at the bottom, if you look at the bottom of the slides, they're ranging, I'm on slide, mine doesn't have numbers.
What's the title?
The title, it's under the subgroups, the average gap by school ELA. The scale is 470 to 515.
Yep.
470 to 515, and then it goes from 36 to 56.
Yes.
So why are you changing, why is that scale at the bottom changing?
Because we're changing the measure. So this is the average scaled score. So this is the actual scaled score on the, on the MCAS test. And so the score ranges.
Changing the score, it's scored differently?
Well, that's the score, the growth. So the net, the other side with the smaller, so the growth is measured on a 0 to 99 scale. So remember, we're looking at, for the growth percentile, we talk about the growth percentile between 40 and 60. So you're in the 40th percentile to the 60th percentile is moderate growth. Above 60, 60 to 99 is your high growth. And then I'm just going to go back to the average scaled score. So that's the actual score, the scaled score on the MCAS tests, which is scored from the 400.
It scored.
I, I guess I, it's just the scoring on the, the scaled score on the MCAS test is, is in the hundreds, as opposed, they're just two very different measures. I'm, I'm not doing a very good job of, but it's, it's, one is the score and one is, is a growth measure. And the growth is a percentile.
Right.
And the percentile, we want between, well, 40 and 60, really you want 60 or above, because that means it's accelerated. But 40 to 60 means you're maintaining.
Right. But in, and, and in terms of the scale, a percentile is going to be between 0 and 99.
Right.
And then the actual scaled score is going to be.
Is what the score is.
The way in which they report the scaled score, yeah. Does that help, Kathy?
It is, except it's hard to compare because between the BUE, the intermediate, and the high school, it's hard to see how they progress from the elementary level into, BUE is elementary. But if you go back a few slides, you can see that those transitions into new buildings, those are the two years where there's lower growth.
Yep.
And so I, I look at that and wonder how much is due to that transition, how much is due to the fact that there's less in the building for, for students who are below fourth grade level or below eighth grade level, for them to be remediated. It's, you know, they're, they're sitting in the same class with the teacher differentiating far below where they should be.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But I also, just one final comment. I think I also understand, so on this, the scaled score, you'll see all of the, all of the schools, because all of the MCAS tests, regardless of the grade level, are scored that same scaled score measure. And we only see the, the three schools on the SGP, because again, grade three, the elementary schools don't have a growth percentile measure, because they only are tested once. Yeah. So that's also why those disappear off. Okay. So I think that brings me to the accountability preview. Did you want me to?
Go, go, go. I'll jump in.
All right.
You're on a roll.
So as we've said a couple times now, 2023 marks the return of DESI's full accountability model. And so accountability is measured through performance of the various student groups, our schools and districts on these specific indicators listed here. Achievement, student growth, so both MCAS related, high school completion, English language proficiency in this case is the access test, and then the additional indicators being chronic absenteeism and participation in advanced coursework. And that is looking at 11th and 12th graders, as 11th and 12th graders. There are two components of accountability. The first is really looking, it's a comparison across, of, from school to school across the state. So that would be a way of comparing schools. And then the criterion reference really looks at a school or district's progress towards these targets, which we will be digging into in December, improvement targets set by DESI. And this is a way for schools to compare, to kind of self-assess, to compare yourself to the prior year. So the normative is a way in which to compare different schools. And the criterion is where you kind of look at yourself, your own school, and compare with the prior year. And so this is the district accountability page, it's actually on the DESI web page, website, under the, the school and district profiles. And again, this is kind of all of that information around, you can see the achievement growth, high school completion down the left column. So those are those categories within accountability. And then we will dig into kind of the point system and how we earn points that then get us to this normative rating and the criterion reference percentile, percentage. Do you want to say anymore about this particular?
Yeah, I'll jump in just to add a little bit here, because later on this evening, you'll see my student learning goal is tied to improvement of some of these accountability measures. And, and so the score is made out of four total possible points in the areas that Kristin just talked about. The, behind that zero out of four, one out of four, two out of four, three out of four, or four out of four are targets that the Department of Education has set. If you go to the district profile, you can click about the data and get a detailed report of our progress towards particular improvement targets. I would just point out a couple areas of strength here in terms of district accountability. We achieved four out of four points related to chronic absenteeism, and the work that's being done at schools related to attendance. That is something that we hope continues and is, and we keep up with. There, if you look at the attendance, I think you would say that there's still some room for growth there, but fortunately, we met the goal due to the hard work of our building-based teams on improving attendance and absenteeism. Another area that is a strength related to our district is in non-high school grades, getting three out of four points related to progress towards attaining English language proficiency. I think this is another sophistication of how MCAS is now presented to us and accountability is now presented to us. We saw our ELA scores previously and proficiency, but we also talked about challenges that students who are learning English would have in taking a test in English. And so there is an alternative data point here pointing towards progress towards English language proficiency as measured by a specific assessment, the access assessment that's being done in the January timeframe for all of our Ls. We have kind of trends consistent with our achievement and growth in many areas related to math being stronger, getting two out of four points. And an area that we know is an area of focus around English language arts development for both non-high school grades and at the high school, getting zero out of four points. So later on this evening, I'll share more about my student learning goal, which ties to our literacy efforts and ties to these metrics in terms of improving towards targets in the area of literacy and language development.
A nice segue into the kind of summary of our highlights and challenges. So, you know, our highlight, you know, for sure, grade three math, it continues to outperform the state. Same was true last year. We're definitely trending in a great direction with our grade three math. Grades four through six, the percent proficient increased in both math and ELA over last year. So again, seeing that gap closing, improving above the state average or the state increase as well. Grade eight, grade eight in high school suit, high school science improvement over last year where the state was flat. Challenges, certainly, grade seven and 10 really need to dig deeply into the, the decline in the percent proficient, both ELA and math. So trying to get some understanding of that data. We are still below the pre-pandemic achievement, but we are making gains in a number of areas and, you know, seeing those gaps in the average scaled score and SGP when we look at our subgroups as well. And so that really brings us to our next steps, where, you know, as Sarah just mentioned, you know, that focus on literacy. So professional development has been taking place for our K5 ELA educators. And this is focused on instructional strategies in conjunction with the GLEAM grant. This will also ultimately lead us to the identification, or I should say pilot and identification of high-quality instructional materials so that we can culminate with the adoption of those. We also are undergoing, or using our, our STAR screening tool for elementary literacy screening. So this is identifying students who are significantly below benchmarks and supporting them with targeted interventions for K3, and then bringing in monthly data meetings with BIS and BHS to identify short and long-term strategies to support learning, learning and growth. And I think you'll see a lot of, you know, some of these points also reflected in the individual school improvement plans that will be presented shortly.
Excellent. Any questions? Peter, we'll just start down with you and.
Yeah, I jotted down so many notes here, I hope this makes sense. When it comes to MCAS, I always have a comment, I guess. I, I ran for school committee a couple of years ago, stressing a few items. One is keeping our Barnstable students in Barnstable, and the other is to raise all of our scores, including MCAS. And I think we all know great public schools are essential to the health of any community. They are the main driver of economic development, they're the spirit of any community. And I totally understand your point, Mike, in how ridiculous it is to give MCAS to a non-English speaker. It's, I get it, it's ridiculous. But, but that's what we're doing, across the state, not just here in Barnstable. And I think Barnstable schools need to continue to improve its MCAS scores, since MCAS scores are one main way of how our schools are ranked. And I'm very glad that we have improved in some areas, but we are below the state average in way too many categories. I'm not saying we should need to be in the top 5% of schools or anything like that, but we should be at least the state average. And I hope we can agree on that. I don't, maybe it's me. I remember not so long ago how important our schools treated MCAS scores. Teachers would wait with either excitement or dread when the scores came out. And now I, I know this talk of getting rid of MCAS. So I don't know, maybe we're on a crossroads here, but I sure would love to see these scores continue to improve. I'm glad to see the next steps you just noted. And, and I hope it still remains a focus, MCAS remains a focus of the Barnstable schools.
Thanks, Peter. Andre, you're all set. Kathy?
Yeah, I, I agree with Pete's comments. I do think it's unacceptable that our district is not performing at least at the state average. I think sometimes we need to think a little bit out of the box. And professional development for K to 5 ELA educators is great, but I don't, I don't feel as though it's the educator in need of the, as much professional development, and that's going to be the be-all and end-all. I believe that we need to think how to use our additional resources such as Title I a little better. We have whole school Title I in some of our buildings, and they appear to give little bits to a lot of students. And I'm wondering why we can't take those students truly below grade level and let's have these Title I teachers teach small groups of students who really are our targeted populations so that they can, they can have a little bit more substance instead of a little tiny bit. And then if those lowest-performing students are in a separate group, it might help the classroom progress move a little bit better, in a better direction, because you're not, your range of students isn't as great. I equate some of what ends up happening with the way we structure our classrooms now as somebody walking into a calculus course who doesn't have the skill in algebra. They're not going to learn in that setting. So if you have students that are sitting in those transition schools, the BIS and the grade four, they're, they're almost set up to fail. If they're not at, and they haven't achieved progress closer to grade three, what grade three is expected, I don't know how you can expect to throw them into a grade four class and improve as much as we need to improve. I am a little disappointed in that. I, I think the GLEAM grant is great. I think having one major reading program for the majority is great. However, I do know that the special, this, the scores for the students with disabilities are, are much lower, and they're not closing those gaps, they're actually widening. And we've had some special ed teachers who believe certain programs will work for them, and they've requested professional development, and they've been denied. And if, if the specialized teachers are the ones that are teaching these students, I think we need to listen to these teachers, and we need to provide the professional development that they feel will help them, help their students. So I'm a little disappointed with that in a way. I know some schools that have used Title I funds to supplement small groups that are really far below after school. And I don't know if that's, I'm not aware that that's being done in Barnstable. It's, there are also Title I funds that are targeted and being used before school starts in the morning in some cases. So we have a number of families who take advantage of the before and after-school program. And if we have some students that are, we have people in our buildings, maybe we need to set up some type of stipend and see if some of these teachers who are interested in, in providing additional instruction can do so either before or after school. So I think taking a, a better look at not, not just one way of fixing the problem, but trying to look out of the box a bit may help.
Okay. I have no comments right now. I'm going to wait till after next month. I just kind of want to see the other side of it. Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to the other side of it next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask, I see that you have.
Yeah, sure. I'm going to actually just take something out of order.
Yes.
Is that what you're going to say?
The community mentor.
Yeah, that's what I was just going, I was just going to say that. So I'm going to, for all the folks over here that have been so patient, I apologize. I should have taken it out earlier. Actually, before the MCAS, I was like, oh, I should have just taken it out of order. So I apologize, but I'm looking, look for a motion to take 4.8 and 5.3 out of order for next, if I can get a motion.
All right. Move to rearrange the agenda to move 4.8 and item. All right, move to rearrange the agenda to move 4.8 and item 5.3 to occur before item 4.3.
I'll second that.
Motion, second and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Like I said, I apologize. I was like, oh gosh, you're gonna learn more about MCAS than you ever thought you should or could. So I'm gonna now move on to 4.8, approve the community mentor job description.
Thank you. So I'm sure Principal Friedman would like to be here, she is up in Beverly with the Meeting the Moment group, but we want to put this request to the school committee, which is to approve a community mentor job description and ultimately up to 10 community mentor positions at Barnstable High School. This started as part of a brainstorm in terms of supporting our students, particularly around a positive and safe school culture, supporting at-risk students, and while we are actively working to diversify our educator workforce, also finding ways to partner with our community and increasing the diversity of adult role models from the community that are engaged and work with and support our youth. So the job goal is to do all of those things, and we've had the pleasure of collaborating with members from the People of Action, which was mentioned earlier by Kathy Bent as being acknowledged at town council. Andre King has been part of these conversations since the beginning as a member of People of Action with the idea and the vision to, again, partner with members and leaders in our community to support our at-risk youth. In addition to folks from the People of Action, we are also working to reach out to additional community members with a broad representation of mirroring our student population to have mentors working with students. And we're joined here tonight, Jesse Barboza was here, Willie Ford is here, Jason Gordine and David Adams, who have already been serving as mentors in a volunteer capacity in our school this year, starting with the very first day of school, greeting students, and I personally have seen, I think, these mentors in our school every time I have been at the high school, which is, I go pretty regularly, interacting with students and overall checking in with them and creating a positive and safe school culture in our community spaces, our hallways, our cafeterias, popping into classes when teachers have requested, and engaging and interacting with students. But this would take the program to, I think, the next level, formalizing it, acknowledging and recognizing the work that's being done through compensation, which we're proposing at this point for the ESER grant, where we still have some funding available to the end of this fiscal year. I have seen grants from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health that I think, long-term, could support the sustainability of this work. And so I do think that that is a real active possibility, and Barnstable's actually one of the priority towns for some of the grants from DPH that I think would align with community mentorship. By formalizing this, it would be to deepen the relationships and have mentors work directly with students in kind of an intervention model, both proactive to support students that are identified by teachers and counselors and administrators as needing some extra support, but also when stuff happens and students misbehave and make bad decisions, coming in and helping to support the response based on that. I think ultimately and long-term, we would love to see the program expanded and included at BIS, perhaps at our younger grades as well, with students perhaps growing into mentor roles for our younger students. We saw the exchange students from Bosnia working with students at BUE, and we have some success with interns across the district of students working with younger students, so really this community support of supporting our youth. The supervision would funnel through our dropout prevention coordinator, and Willie has been working closely with Lee Dockerty to put together the parameters and framework of the program, training of mentors, which would follow as our employees, follow all of our practices related to onboarding. And the details of the job description are here, Willie has a clinical background as a counselor and is very well-versed, and I am really excited. We've had some positive anecdotal and qualitative feedback so far in conversations that we've had about the work, and I look forward to see where this can go. So I'm asking for the school committee's support in the job description.
I would invite you guys to come on down and tell us how it's been going, what you've been doing, kinda what you think, how you think, where it's been kind of under a volunteer up to this point, kinda, oh, he's not coming down. He told me before the meeting, he was like, nope, they're the spokespeople, I'm staying up here. Hi, if you could just give us your name and just kinda tell us like what you think, and like, how's it been going, and like, just kinda, whatever you wanna talk about.
Great. So my name is Will Ford. So the people you see behind me are a part of a team. We're the people, we grew up in this town, you know, we walked up and down Main Street as kids and got our driver's license and drove up and down Main Streets, you know, did the power circle around Main Street as kids, so we can relate to a lot of these kids. If you don't know who People of Action, who the People of Action are, we were a group of guys that got together one day during a very heightened period of time, and we named our, we call ourselves POA or People of Action because, you know, we'd always have conversations with each other about change needs to happen, we need to do something, but we just did that, we'd always talk about the change, right? So we decided to come up with this People of Action group, and we started to act, and then one of our first acts within the community was the Unity Day. If you haven't been a part of it, I think this year was probably one of our biggest outcomes of the year, and it's been going for about seven or eight years now, I believe, we've been doing it with the support of the town, the police department, and a bunch of other great people. You know, over the years, we've started to see kind of a increase in the behaviors of the kids in our community, whether that be due to being separated due to COVID and all these other things, due to disconnects from social interactions and things of that nature, you know, you could kind of pick and choose why we think that increase is. So again, we started having these conversations about how important it would be for us not only to create these different types of events, whether it be backpacks, whether it be school supplies for kids, whether it be, you know, all these different types of things that we did. How cool would it be to be able to get inside these schools and be able to interact with these kids where they're struggling really badly? And we're not just, I know, I've been very fortunate to work with a lot of the major agencies on Cape Cod, you know, Justice Resources Institute, Child and Family Services, Mentor, all these wonderful places that provide wonderful services for our kids. But the only difference is with these particular services, they, a lot of kids are eliminated. So, cause in order for some of these kids to be able to get this type of interaction, not necessarily to that type of level, but to get this type of mentor, this type of role model type interaction, they have to have a hub, which is an outside therapist, they have to have an ICC, which is intensive care coordinator, they have to have all these different things just to qualify to have a mentor, which I believe that should be something that every kid should have access to at any given time, to be able to kind of help them work through some things. And mentors come in all shapes and sizes and things like that, and we have a very diverse team, kinda ready to go, you know, people that we've kinda feel that have been vetted and would fit perfectly into those roles, and those are people that these kids already know. Those are kids, are people in the community that we see every single day that these kids look up to. And with this particular idea and program, it just gives us more access to the kid that, I was actually in a meeting yesterday, and I said, we throw a lot of services at kids who act out, right? And we, you know, get the mentors, we get them, you know, IHT and home behavior services, but that kid that doesn't necessarily act out is left behind because they don't, they haven't been able to, cause again, the kid that acts out, we give more attention to versus the quiet kid, the kid that sits in the corner. So we stand here before you today to kinda ask you to approve this in order to give us an opportunity to provide a service that a lot of these kids don't have, and not only to work with the kid that acts out, but the kid that's holding everything in, to give them an opportunity to connect with someone and be able to kind of spill out a little of that water in their cup. So that's who we are, that's why we're here.
Excellent.
Jason, who's a coach at Barnstable High School. To give you an understanding, the guys behind me have been doing mentoring well before we became POA. There hasn't been a time where you wouldn't see this guy or this guy, this guy taking about 10 kids fishing, you know, not his kids, but he's got his own, but taking a bunch of kids fishing and taking pictures, and you seeing these kids that have no idea how to cast, how to bait, but then all of a sudden they're in waiters and they're professional fishermen.
He doesn't tell them the secret spot to go to to get the fish, though.
But if there's a spot, he knows. But, and again, you know, Dave, a guy who's out here in the streets every day, and he connects with these kids before they step into the schools, and he knows all their parents, and when you see them, see him walk through Barnstable High School, you know, they already know how to straighten up and act right because they know that Dave knows their parents. So again, we have a bunch of guys, we have a bunch of diverse, and there's some great members who are in the schools already who interact with these kids, but there's, you know, Barnstable's a big, big school, and there's a lot of kids. And given their schedules with the things that they already have on their plate, it's very difficult to be able to engage with the amount of kids that we have in these schools. So again, if you have anything you wanna add, Jay?
How you doing? I'm Jason Gordine.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So just to give you a snapshot of what we've been seeing in the schools already, so we've been in there since day one this year, and it started off really shaky, as you know, you got a bunch of big guys walking around the school, everybody has the fuzzy eyebrows, like, all right, what is happening here, why are they walking out? So it took a little while for, you know, the faculty to get on board and so forth, but in the last, I wanna say, month, we've been invited into a number of classrooms to talk to kids that either have been, you know, disrespectful, not listening to the teachers, or, you know, just being kids. And we've been able to have, you know, conversations with them, one-on-one conversations, or even group setting conversations with them. And it's taken off, where every time we're in there, we're getting invited into two or three more classes every day. So right now, the three of us are the ones that are in the school the most. We do have a 12-man People of Action crew, just to give you an idea of what that looks like, we have emergency room technicians on our team, we have NFL coaches on our team, we have professional boxers on our team, we have basketball coaches, football coaches, we have three business owners. So we're very well-diverse, and a lot of the groundwork that we put on is to make sure these kids are looking at the next level. What do you wanna do? What's your dream job? And understand that a lot of us have connections in the workforce, so wherever you wanna go. I think through Brian Morrison, a lot of you know, he connected a couple of kids with intern programs that look to do, you know, salon work or, you know, intern over here. So we've already connected a number of kids, and these kids respect that, and they dial into that, and they understand, cause they know us, we're in the streets with them. So it's a real big connection, and so far, we've seen a lot of the big violence in the schools kinda decrease already in Barnstable High with the presence and us helping with the faculty and building that alliance with the faculty. So I think it's working so far, and we're looking forward to doing bigger things, definitely getting over to Jason's school and BIS eventually as well.
I hate to tell you, but I'm trying to get you guys through K through 12, so I've already talked to Sarah, I've already talked to Sarah about like, why aren't we doing the K through five? Like, if you can start when they're small, you know what, by the time they're our size, you know what, they already understand it, like, that's what I'm all about, I'm all about you. So I hate to tell you, but keep your schedule open.
And make that comment, because I currently work at Child and Families, and we have kids that are as young as five.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Six years old, so it's a real...
I'm a big proponent of you start when they're small, and they grow up with the respect, and they grow up with that, then by the time they're 6'70" and looking up at them, they already have the expectations, that's like, that's the way I look at it. But thank you very much. Did they do okay? Is there anything else you wanna add, or are you okay? Okay, thank you very much, guys. Is there anything else you wanna add, or you guys all set?
We're all set.
Okay.
If I may ask a question?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Sorry. First of all, Will and Jason, you guys are great spokespersons for this program, terrific. Is this the job description I've already seen?
Yeah.
And this was after-school?
This is during...
No, this is during, this is during the day. And it could be after-school, actually, it could be during the day or after.
For some reason, it's in my head that I read it, it's an after-school...
This could be during the day.
Okay. Okay, well, that kinda answers my question, because if it was an after-school thing, it didn't make a lot of sense to me. You guys are currently in during the school day, when you're the, yeah, okay. All right, well, then, my question has been answered. Thank you, I appreciate it, guys.
Andre, do you have anything to add, or are you all set?
No, it's just very promising. You know, none of these gentlemen, grew up with them, and, you know, they're humble individuals, but, you know, they themselves as student athletes, you know, did some rather remarkable things, and that's not just, you know, Will, who obviously played in the NFL, you know, but Jason, David, so these were the gentlemen that I looked up to, who were ahead of me in school, and so for, you know, and that had a big impact on myself personally, and so to continue to do this, it's very promising, and we want to support you, and we wanna see the results that we know this program will glean.
Kathy?
So I fully support what you're doing, I think the connections that you're making are with the students are wonderful, and that you have the ability to do things that other employees in the buildings aren't able to do. So philosophically, I agree with all of this. I have a concern about the way the qualifications are presented in the job description. We have, it sounds like we have a core of people and very, very good people, very well-qualified people who are currently available, but this is going to be a position that's posted as an open position on our job employment, and I think we need to think about what, how loose these qualifications are written. For example, I don't really think that somebody who's fresh out of high school, under the age of 25, maybe 23, would be a good fit to place in a high school that young, too close in age. But you can't, you can't use age discrimination, but you can use other types of qualifications going on with experience or that are a little bit more stringent or a little tighter. I think we have to be careful of having a description that doesn't provide anything as basic as a high school diploma written in as being necessary, and I would think as an educational institution, if we have people coming in as role models, they should have a GED or a high school diploma. I'm just a little concerned about how that qualification is presented. We know the core group of people who are interested in this position, who are very qualified, it's nothing about that, but I'm saying down the road, as we increase the numbers, you can't possibly reach every single one of the students who need your help, we're not going to know people who are applying. So we have to have some qualifications that are going to assure us that they can provide evidence that they have great relationship-building skills, they can communicate effectively.
Currently, as a, for all those three major institutions that I mentioned, like JRI, Child and Family Services, Mentor Network, they only require a high school diploma to be a mentor, because at the end of the, how it works is, as a mentor, you're not necessarily, you're not, you're not, it's not necessarily, you're not providing treatment per se, and the work that you're doing is obviously being supervised by Doc or whomever that a designated person is. And not to mention, you're still working with school counselors, you know, ADs, administrators, adjustment counselors, things of that nature. So it's not putting a person in a position where they're, you know, one, a kid with no supervision themselves. And so again, when I work with these agencies and I bring in other people to hire people for these same type of positions, there's always a hub, quote-unquote hub, or supervisor person that's there to kind of like make sure that...
The right people are, yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's kind of a hard position to have. I agree with Kathy, but I also like, like, college isn't necessarily necessary.
I'm not saying...
Like, no, but I understand, but the thing is, is it's a mentor, I mean, it's hard... No, but I understand, but the thing is, is it's a mentor, I mean, it's hard because...
Because mentors come from different walks of life.
Right, right.
And again, not, I use this analogy when I do my trainings, and when we walk into a building, so that high, we'll just say that high school graduate just graduated and he walks into the building and wants to be a mentor, right? That high school graduate is going to walk in the door with a key ring, right? And on his key ring, it's going to be empty. So when he walks in, or she walks in, or they walk in, they're going to try to engage with this particular individual, and they may say, hey, man, let's go for a walk. And that kid might tell you, hey, get away from me, I don't want nothing to do with you. Oh, man, that doesn't work. And then the next day, they might come in and say, hey, man, would you like to get a cup of coffee? And then that works, they put that on their key ring. So experience happens over time, and with the appropriate people in appropriate positions to be able to train and vet these type of people, you can essentially, I personally would rather have a high school graduate come in, because I can train that person. Or if I can get a clinician to come in and do it, that's great. But I'd rather have a person that could come in, I can train that person to do the job that I want them to do, versus having someone that, you know, that comes in with a set of keys.
I just want to clarify, I'm not saying that the person needs to have degrees, because I think great mentors come from all walks of life. If legal vets this and thinks it's okay the way it is, I just want to make sure that we are posting positions where we can make sure the public is reassured that we're doing our due diligence. One thing that, all employees, you have to have your background checks, you have to have your Cory and your Sory. So even as a volunteer, you're vetted. I just want to make sure, so if, Jane, have you looked at this and you're comfortable with the way it is?
I think we can adapt it as we see how things are changing. And I believe, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought that Doc had talked about having some sort of training, or...
Yeah.
Onboarding, so that people are all doing the same sorts of things. So, I mean, like anything, if we find somebody isn't a fit, then we can address that, but I think in order to get the program up and running, I think that the job description is open enough for us to get...
So you can get all walks of life?
Different people in, and you obviously have a team already to go. So I would say that it's sufficient for what we're doing now, and as things develop, everybody may put their heads together and say, let's fine-tune certain things, and let's see if we can get other people in that have different qualifications.
Also, keep in mind, this is an actual job. There's still an interview process.
Oh, yeah.
They still have to be vetted. So we're not just saying any Joe Smoke can come off the street and say, I'm going to be a mentor. They still have to go through a process.
Right.
Even the people within our circle have to go through the vetting process.
Right, 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 and interview process, and the whole, you're getting, like you said, you're not allowed to volunteer anymore. And one of the things is getting paid, now it kind of, and I don't mean this in a bad way, so don't take it, but it's no longer volunteer, it's now a job. So there's going to be a lot more vetting than just being like, hey, I'm volunteering in a classroom, I have minimum to go through to volunteer in a classroom, but in order to get paid by the Barnstable School System, there's a whole nother layer of stuff to go through in order to be getting paid. So that kind of is helping that process along, that it's now a job.
And also, keep in mind, most of us in our group have worked for Barnstable High School already.
Right, so really, it's nothing about any of the individuals...
But what she's saying is, it's not about you guys.
No, no.
In the future, I understand what you're saying.
Right, and I recognize the work that you've put in, and it's excellent, across all avenues of the community. It's when you don't know the people coming in, and when there aren't those connections...
Ten years down the road, when you guys are like, I don't want to do it.
Right, and, you know, it's being careful, there are things that can backfire during a hiring process, even if somebody feels he or she is qualified and they don't get the position, there's a lot that goes in from an HR standpoint. So if the school attorney is okay with this initial job description, and the superintendent, I can support it. I just am raising some concerns, because it isn't about anybody who we think is going to apply, who we know, who we're, you know, we're very anxious to get them into our buildings, because they'll do good work. It's about somebody that we don't know, and it's about...
You guys are having the bar, what Kathy's saying is, having the bar up here was what you, the initial group, the bar is going to be up here. Ten years, we want the bar to still be here, if not higher, right? So the people you hire over the years, you want to keep that bar up high.
And I just assumed that all positions, aside from this position, went through the same process.
Yeah.
I just assumed that this new position would go through the same exact processes as any other.
Yeah, they do.
I'll just add one thing, I did have Bill Cole from HR look at the job description.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So would that, can I... Another, how many hours a week is this per person?
Eight.
Oh, it is only eight, okay, great, thank you.
So can I get a motion? Are there any other questions? Are we good? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would move, let me just, move to approve the community mentor job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion, a second, and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.3. Is there any, there's probably no other discussion, I'm assuming.
Move to approve up to ten community mentor positions.
I'll second.
Having a motion, a second, and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it, passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming up and talking. Honestly, thank you, and have a good night. You don't have to stay anymore, honest. Okay, now we're going to go back to our regular agenda, going back to 4.3, school improvement plans pre-K through seven. Sarah?
So tonight, we're joined by our principals from the pre-K to seven schools. Each are here to share a few slides with you to provide information related to their school improvement plans. Back in September, I think, maybe it was August, I had shared with you the four district goals, the first one being around culture and a sense of belonging, the second around rigorous curriculum and instruction. All of the principals have been asked to align their school improvement plans to those two goals, and then they have the option to add additional school-based goals based on the specific needs and self-assessment that they would do with their school councils. So I would invite our first principal to come up, and if they all want to migrate a little bit closer to the podium, that might make the transitions a little bit easier. But we've prepared a combined slide deck for you this evening.
Hi, everybody.
Who's heading the call? Are you heading first?
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Welcome.
So we'll start on slide, slide three just said what I had said, so we'll start on slide four for the Enoc Cobb Early Learning Center.
Okay.
Oops, sorry, did I go too fast? No.
Nope, you can keep going.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Okay, so you can see here, under our first district goal, a culture of belonging, a safe and inclusive climate, and a shared vision of student success. Enoc Cobb is really going to be working on this by strengthening partnerships with families and the community, and we hope to do that by expanding our culturally sensitive opportunities for two-way communication and homeschool connection. So last year, while we were here, sharing our school improvement plans, I shared with you that we were expanding our opportunities for family engagement, and we did that by adding some parent training sessions and additional special events. So this year, we'd like to continue those opportunities, but also work to, using more resources to ensure that all of these events are accessible to our multilingual families, and also offering some evening events to make it easier for working families to access. The second thing we'll be doing is strengthening partnerships with the Kennedy Dunivan Center, who is our early intervention partner, and the YMCA, who offers Head Start services. So we've always had a really close relationship with early intervention. That organization has gone through a lot of administrative changes. We continue to work closely with them despite all those changes, and that's been going really well. And now, this year, we're really focusing on rebuilding a connection with Head Start, because we do share a lot of students with Head Start. So we want to make sure that we're communicating and collaborating so that the students get what they need throughout their full day, and not just when they're at Enoc Cobb for half-day preschool. Second, our, how we plan to support rigorous curriculum and effective engaging instruction that is aligned with the vision of the Barnstable graduate, is to consistently implement our MTSS framework to support the learning needs of students. So we will be doing that through implementing a tier-one preschool curriculum with fidelity program-wide. Last year, we talked about piloting a new preschool core resource, an academic core resource. So the pilot program has completed, and we are in year one of implementation. As a group, we're really working to implement the program with fidelity through, the teachers and administrators are working collaboratively during PLC time, and also we're doing this through learning walks. Next, we are really defining and implementing the role of our ESL teacher and tier-one instruction for our multilingual learners. So this is the first year that we've had our very own ESL teacher, it's very exciting. But at the preschool level, supports for multilingual learners look a little bit different, because they don't necessarily have to have direct ESL instruction. So we're really working closely with the director of multilingual learners to define this role and put, you know, clear best practices in place for assessing language proficiency, monitoring student progress, and really taking a shared responsibility between the classroom teachers and the ESL teacher to support our multilingual learners at this age. And lastly, under bullet two here, we're going to improve practices for using data to inform tiered social-emotional learning instruction and behavior intervention plans. So we have a very strong tier-one ESL, I'm sorry, not ESL, SEL instructional practices in place, and now we are moving, or we like to move towards improving work with educators to enhance practices for identifying students who require tier-two and tier-three supports, as well as the development of behavior intervention plans. So our school psychologist has put some things in place to just make that process a little bit more formal and structured. Shall I keep going? Okay, I have one more. So our school objective then really focuses around effective special education procedures. We, most of these things are pretty self-explanatory, but we, as you know, we're an integrated school, and we're going to be working to put some things in place to make all of the procedures and timelines a little bit more effective, and also try to avoid over and under identification of students with disabilities through some new practices. So one of them is to, it's pretty simple, but just using one of our staff meetings each month to focus on a special ed topic. We also were lucky enough to get some additional administrative assistance support this year, so we're really working with her to improve our tracking procedures and just organizational practices. And then we will also be putting together a committee within the school who will be tasked with creating a student support and decision-making guideline document. So the goal of that group will, to really look at how we make decisions at IEP meetings, and to try to come up with a document that will help guide the decision-making and help us to make sure that we're consistently proposing the same types of services and program models for children with similar needs, if that makes sense. Hopefully, I articulated that well, but you can ask me questions if you like. And finally, we will be providing some training and support to the preschool teachers. The Department of Ed recently revised their criteria for integrated pre-K teachers, and now they will, in addition to their early childhood licenses, they will also need to obtain a second special ed license. So we'll be supporting that process through PD, trainings, and mentored internships. And I added a few cute photos for you.
Any questions? Seeing none? Nope, thank you. Excellent job.
All right. I tried to do that really...
Next is Kathy Millen.
Hello.
Hi, Kathy, welcome.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm very proud to speak on behalf of Barnstable Community Innovation School. I'm excited about the upcoming year and some of the work that we've already started. We are working very hard to align our goals throughout the building for all of our staff so that we're all sort of super-focused on what needs to happen at BCIS. So if I could just see the slide. Oh, I have the clicker. Okay. No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. So in terms of a culture of belonging and a safe and inclusive climate and a shared vision of student success, we were, we received the MTSS Tier Literacy Grant last year, it's a three-year grant. So last year, we really were looking internally at how we take our high-quality English Language Arts Core Program and really start to dig into it and select, because every core program has a lot of components, really carefully select the materials and resources that are provided through our Core Literacy and also through some of our supplementals, such as Lexia and Hegarty. So we did a lot of work with our licensed educators last year, looking at curriculum. And we developed some really great plans that provide all teachers with differentiation across all four grade levels. So this year, our goal is to, again, dig into the resources that are being rolled out to us through the MTSS Tier Literacy Grant, and look at what's there to help support our families so that they understand how they can help their children gain early literacy skills at home. Our second goal under that is to further cultivate a shared vision of student success throughout our building, and one of the ways that we're doing that is we purchase The Joyful Teacher. This book is, it's amazing, it reflects a lot of the educator evaluation standards, but everything that is detailed in the book is broken down in a user-friendly way for teachers, starting with the self-assessment. And then the strategies that are highlighted in the book are all based on years and years of research and evidence of best practices. So we're excited about that, it's actually really fun, too. In terms of rigorous curriculum and effective engaging instruction that is aligned with the vision of a Barnstable graduate, we have our PBL coach, who has jumped into the position this year, Alyssa Chase. She is providing ongoing coaching for our grade-level teachers and pushing into classrooms and working collaboratively with teachers in classrooms to implement our PBL lessons and units based upon the curriculum standards. We're, we also brought in PBL Works, which is nationally recognized as being on the forefront of PBL. We brought a trainer in for our October 6th PD Day that was very successful. The second bullet there, in terms of furthering our understanding of the science of reading, we again will be working with MTSS Tier Literacy this year, and each one of our grade-level teams will be digging into one of the five pillars of the science of reading and becoming sort of in-house experts, and then sharing out the high-quality materials and resources that they are exposed to. This work will happen with Kelly White, leading the initiative as our reading specialist, and who has gone through a graduate course with MTSS Tier Literacy in terms of, to learn about, more about the science of reading and how to coach others in implementing the science of reading. So next slide, oh, I have it. Next slide, Kath. Next slide, Kath. Our, we have two school objectives. One is we are still really working to further develop a safe, happy, and healthy playground, not just for our school but for the surrounding community. So, we have a newly-formed playground committee and they are digging through the architectural designs that we had done up, the cost estimates, and really committing some good effort to that initiative. And the second one, and this will involve all of you at some point in the future, actually on March 6th, we are up for review and renewal of our innovation plan this year. We're in our fifth year. And so, we have a committee that is digging into the innovation plan and they're creating survey questions and based upon how the plan was written and what we've done thus far. And we will be asking for input from all of our stakeholders to determine if, as a community, we in fact want to continue this initiative and if there are any tweaks or changes that need to be made. So, that needs to happen before your March 6th school committee meeting. And we identified, working with Sarah, we identified that date because if, we want to make sure that we are able to inform our parents and potential parents about what our school will look like moving forward beyond this year. So, March 6th is sort of the deadline that we set for that. So, yeah. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. In terms of the previous slide, it looked at ability to read with accuracy, fluency, and comprehension, which to me, synonym for that is early literacy. What are the challenges that we're seeing? I noted, you know, to Mike's point, you know, in terms of having a lot of English language learners at this level, but you want to talk about our MCAS scores. This is going to be a recurring question that I'm interested in. You know, your MCAS score is going to be dependent on your literacy, you know, your ability to comprehend and understand. So, is it that you have a high number of Ls at your school? You know, what are the challenges to, you know, it's great that you're going to incorporate the science of reading, so on and forth, but what do you see as the challenges to accuracy, fluency, and comprehension in terms of our reading?
So, you know, I think, I think all of my colleagues will agree. Our students need foundational reading skills and our teachers need to know exactly how to do that most efficiently and effectively. And, you know, we need, we need letter identification, we need letter sounds, we need, we need decoding skills. The good news is, there's research out there that tells us how to do it. And, and there's a consensus, I would say, throughout the country now as to how we do that. And we focus on those five, those five pillars of early literacy. So, for, I think, very importantly, it's important, as I think Kristen will agree, to have high-quality materials and resources that reflect the needs of our students, the kids in front of us. We brought in the updated Reading Wonders. I think it's three years ago now. We knew we needed something that was updated and reflected more of the more current research. And we selected that specific reading program because it's also, it offers components for English language learners or bilingual learners. And so, in our building, what we're, what we're finding is effective is having both our ELL teachers and our classroom teachers using the same program with modifications so that if a child in a classroom is exposed to a book, maybe a read aloud, and maybe they're, they're talking about the vocabulary in the book, when they then are working with the ELL teacher, whose job is to build language, English language for students, that teacher already knows what's been introduced in the classroom and then can work more specifically in building that, understanding of vocabulary while they're working with them. So, that child is more ready the next time there's a conversation in their classroom or when they have to write about it or respond orally.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's got to be aligned.
So, it's interesting to hear how this is all put together. I think back, and it's a little off the track, but does anybody remember those beginning reading books so that students who struggled with reading felt like a reader? They were the ones that had some words and then had a picture, then had a word. I forget what they're called. I remember using them.
Levelled readers? Or decodable?
No, not a levelled reader. It was actually a book where you could sit with your child and every couple of words, they had a picture instead of a word, so they weren't always sounding something out. They could pick up on the words plus the picture cues. And I'm surprised and I'm think brainstorming and thinking, is there anything like that for EL which has some, you know, English words and then a couple of words that they're already familiar with so that they're in that fluency and they feel successful reading and it isn't such a struggle? I can only imagine if I tried to read in German or Spanish or Portuguese, it would be such a struggle. And I, my heart breaks for these little ones when they're trying so hard and the success doesn't come, but are there materials out there like that?
There are materials and there are also experts in our schools. Our ELL teachers are trained along with all of our classroom teachers who have the SEI endorsement. They're trained in how to build students' understanding of vocabulary and specifically, you know, when they're planning and co-planning with one another, tearing into the book, the information that's being shared in the classroom and saying, okay, this is what we need to do for this specific child so that they understand. An example of that would be the classroom, the book that was read in the classroom this week was, oh goodness, now I'm going to go blank on it. Anyways, it was, I can't believe I'm going blank on this book. Oh, The Boy Who Cried Wolf, right? So, so it was introduced in the classroom. When the students were polled with their ELL teacher, she knew that that had been the book that was being discussed. So, she was well-prepared. So, she had the images of a wolf. She had the, the name of the wolf in multiple languages. And, you know, taking it a step further, this was just a 10-minute walkthrough today, taking it a step further, that teacher might then have masks of the different characters and encouraging the children to act out the story. So, they're, they're gaining understanding so that when they go back into the classroom, they're better prepared. There's a lot there. In fact, sometimes there's too much, but, so we have to be very careful in what we select for our kids and that's sort of the work we're doing this year with MTSS.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Who's next? I don't even know. Let me look at the...
BWB.
BWB? Beth.
Hi. How are you again?
Welcome. Long time no see.
I know, right? Which one goes? This one? Oh. All right. So, at BWB, same two district goals. Underneath our culture of belonging, right away, it's that interest pathways and you've already heard about that tonight, but that is a huge way for kids to feel part of the community and for our, also our, our parents and community members to feel part and feel that belonging. We are doing a book study this year of The Behavior Code by Jessica Menahan, full staff, and that's off to a great start and has a lot of really relevant information for, for our staff as we move forward. Again, we do, every year, we do surveys, surveys to gather input for vision and sense of belonging along with a multitude of other things as well, so we'll continue to do that. We are doing mixed grade-level PLCs for the first time this year. We still do our math as grade level, our ELA as grade level, and our SEL as grade level, but the fourth week, we do a mixed grade level. We were finding that everybody was sort of isolated and, and living in their own silos, so I wanted to make sure we had time to talk to each other and see what the other grade levels are doing. And then, they each were given the opportunity to choose, choose something they want to focus on as a group for the year with a goal. And each one of them has done an incredible job, kind of working together to decide what they're passionate about, what they want to learn about, and really taking back the PLC to become a true PLC of, of teachers working together and learning toward a, toward a goal that benefits students. So, we're off to a great start with that. Curriculum, engaging instruction, all of that. You are hearing about GLEAM tonight and we also are using a lot of these opportunities for PD through our GLEAM grant to improve our literacy. Last year, we took a deep dive into that early literacy as part of our school improvement plan, so a lot of our teachers have already started that work. And then, this year, we're continuing that work and hoping that we can find some materials or some approaches that really meet our kids' needs. Again, the pathways actually fits under that as well, so we put that there, too. Supporting co-taught classroom opportunities for students. So, I feel very strongly that not separating kids out to do work and that they benefit from each other and they benefit from being in the tier-one instruction. And so, that is something I've always believed and we are trying to bring it back. For COVID, a lot of our multilingual learners were separated out. We kind of started to do that as big groups. And then, what we've seen is just a little bit of a steady decline in our access and in our MCAS scores. So, we are bringing them back in because we are feeling like they're not having that sense of belonging. Same with, you know, all kids do benefit from being in that tier-one instruction. So, we do a little bit of both. We're doing, for our kids that need 90 minutes, we are doing 45 minutes in and 45 minutes out rather than 90 minutes out. So, that's something we're working. We've done it with our special ed kids for years and we see great success there. Our, it's something else new this year we're doing is, is student success meetings. So, we kind of, we've always done a sort of MTSS meeting time where teachers come if their kids are experiencing an issue that possibly moves toward sometimes testing, sometimes interventions, whatever the case may be. And we sort of flipped it this year and we are doing student success meetings. So, in the, the teachers have a lunch block and then they have typically a duty during that time, too, with the lunchroom. So, we take one teacher from each grade level out of the lunchroom during that time and sit with Katie and I and we just walk through what's going well and what are you finding for success with your kids? And then, we walk into, is there anybody coming up on your radar? Anything we can help you with? It's been really, really great. I just think for a teacher to have one-on-one time with the administrators, even though it's a short 20-minute meeting, it's been really helpful. And we're heading off a lot of things that could go away that it doesn't need to go. So, you know, lots of times, it's like everything's going great and we just have this one little thing and we can tweak it. So, that's been really cool this year, too. And then, refining the use of PLCs, which we talked about, and also that's happening within our other PLCs as well where it's becoming more of a true PLC again with our coaches there to facilitate and, but the teachers really doing the, the majority of And then, our, our school goal, one other one is to increase attendance. So, last year, we had a really big drop in our attendance and including, I think, including kindergarten, which they don't typically do for the state, but we had almost 40% with, you know, having, having two, over 10, which is what they were doing. I think it was over 20 last year, but we were still going with the over 10%. So, we're trying to really get kids to want to be there. We have our walking buddies in the morning again, so we always do our morning walk. We have now teachers assigned to kids that give them, they get them right off the bus, they walk around with them on the morning walk. It gives them a reason to want to be at school. They love to have that attention from the teachers, so that's really great. We also have morning mentors and therapeutic blocks that we were able to add this year. Our specialists typically have a small block of time throughout the day that they are not teaching their own classes. So, I've turned those into, like, we have do a little music therapy block, we do an art therapy, we have teachers that just meet one-on-one with kids, and that's been incredible as well. And like, even today, we had a student having a really rough morning and the, and the mentor was the one that could get them back. None of us could, so it was really nice to see. We're adding weekly attendance updates in our newsletter. I had a parent at PTA say, what's up with all this attendance stuff in your newsletter? So, it's getting there. It's, we're trying to hit it home every single day, so we're working on that. And then, we do monitor school-wide attendance and plan interventions when needed. We have a group that works on that as well. And then, we're still doing our monthly walk to school, so we walk from Sturgis Library and anybody who wants to come can come and the parents join us. And we do that one mile from Sturgis to our school, which is great and gets them up early in the morning, too. So, that's where we're at.
Excellent. Any questions? Nope, seeing none? Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Excellent. I think, Kim? I think Centerville?
Hi. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Welcome.
In year two, learned a few things along the way, especially from this group behind me. We're like writing notes feverishly as we're looking at one another's presentation, so that's really great. So, we don't want to go forward. Matthew Brogan. Thank you. So, again, the two district goals, how I've, or we've aligned to those. The culture of belonging and safe, inclusive climate and a shared vision of student success is growing our morning walk. So, we started that last year. When everyone arrives, we walk our walking track as a school community. We invited community members, so we've had the fire department join us a couple of days. I encourage any of you as well. We start at 8:45 at drop-off and we walk till 9:00. It's just, again, get students there, get some out, get some in the fresh air. It's just a really nice way to start our day as a community. Then, I want to work on developing a plan to address chronic absenteeism. So, that's something that I've noted in our data is that chronic absenteeism, students who are absent more than 10 days a year is where that starts. So, we're utilizing John Greenberg, our new social worker, to make a phone call, to reach out before it gets to that 10-day point, introduce himself. It's a really nice opportunity. Hi, it's my first year here. This is who I am. How can I help? You know, why is your child not here? Are they not wanting to come to school? Do they have Mondayitis? Are there other things happening that we can help you with to encourage your child to come to school? And, and that kind of, these all lead into one another, an increase in family communication. Again, utilizing Mr. Greenberg, Ms. Morn, our school counselor, myself, Darni Foley, our new assistant principal, in terms of having better communication with our families. I will speak to a survey that went out today with our building objective. Increasing our presence on the website, again, just showing our community what we're doing, the great things that are happening in our school, inviting them ways to join us and expand that relationship. And then, again, this one keeps on hanging on is the introduction of a therapy dog. So, something that was introduced prior to my joining Centerville in this role. We're still waiting for our match. Since it had been initiated, there have been some changes in policy, so I'm working with our current administration at this level and at the town level to make sure we're checking about, off all our boxes and prepared when they call and say your match is here. We've addressed all those items as well. So, then, to speak to curriculum, again, participation in the GLEAM grant, as you've heard a lot of, we actually have a strong representation on that team. A lot of reflection and really great conversations and asking questions about literacy. What, what are our must-haves? How do we use what we have? What are we really looking for? Where are we going to go? So, it's, it's been a good path to go down and we're getting to a space where we're going to start making some decisions, which is exciting. Learning walkthroughs started a little bit last year, really working with Darni, my assistant principal, on those in, it's to collaborate what we're seeing. So, when she and I are doing Eddie Vals and having really important conversations with educators, making sure we're all speaking the same language. If I say engagement, what does that look like and feel like to me? What does that look like and feel like to our, to Darni, our assistant principal, to our educators? So that we can have some great conversations. our educators? So that we can have some great conversations to move our students forward. Really looking at the instruction that's happening within the classroom, asking thoughtful questions, curiosities, so we can work together and improve student growth. And we started our vision of a Centerville Elementary School graduate. Our opening day, I broke the staff into some diverse groups, and there were really great conversations. It was super exciting to hear what they thought a third grader should take away, to have them prepared to move to that next level. So kind of that backward design, if you would, from the Barnstable vision of a graduate to what are we doing within our schools. And similar to what you're hearing in other buildings, a lot of that is out of the box, not necessarily that traditional type of learning, but addressing the varied skills and interests of students to keep them engaged and foster different avenues for them as well. Some cute pictures below. I was a little, a little, I guess, I don't know, two school objectives instead of just one. The first is really implementing an effective full MTSS model within the school. So MTSS has been around for a while, and Centerville has a really nice mix of veteran and new teachers. And when I look at our staff, some or most of the teachers who are part of that initial MTSS push and adoption have left. So we have a lot of new teachers, and we're using these words and these acronyms, and they're not really fully understanding what that all means. So it's unpacking, kind of assessing where we stand as a staff, then bringing in the supports that I need to bring in, so everyone's speaking, again, that same language and an understanding of how we best meet the needs of our students. So you can see, implementing that, the data committee, which was formed last year as part of our school objectives and, and our school plan is, you know, work tightly with this goal to inform teachers so that those tiers of intervention are successful and we can move our students along, using our SEL data. And again, those walkthroughs, it's just kind of all overlapping, how the pieces really affect each part of the plan. And then the final objective is one I'm really excited about, not that I'm not about the rest, but it's developing an ESL family engagement plan. So when I look at our data, and you saw it in our MCAS data, when you looked at our L students, and you looked at that gap between where our L students were performing versus our non-L students, how can we close that gap? Looking at how are we making our L families feel not just connected, but valued and heard? So we, as a building, the majority of my staff are working on a school-wide professional practice goal, and that is increasing the connectedness and the valued feeling of our L families. So we sent home our survey today to help with our baseline, and the survey was in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Arabic, all on one survey. So our families can understand that this is the population that is within our school. So really curious to see the different levels of their feeling I had. Our interpreters worked to also, we've talked a lot about just translating something isn't necessarily going to get the information that you want, because asking a question that's been translated in English may have a different syntax and understanding for a different language. So we really worked with our interpreters to make sure the English question was crafted to elicit the response we were looking for in a different language. So really working with the staff on that theory as well, of not just translating something, but thinking about how you're asking those questions. Family coffee hours. So some of my colleagues are doing this in terms of welcoming some of our L families in to establish that sense of connection, a community within themselves, to not only address what's happening and learning within our schools, but to support them outside of our school. A lot of our L families are looking for basic services like dentists and doctors and counselors and have food security issue, insecurity issues. And so connecting them with one another, connecting them with our social worker and our school counselor to provide those opportunities to really help them form a bond with one another that will, we think, impact the learning and increase learning, getting children to school. The chronic absenteeism that I addressed in that earlier one is a high rate within our L population. So again, just that overlapping and crossing over of the objectives, hopefully we can't, we can't teach them if they don't come to school. But why aren't they coming to school? So getting some of those answers to those questions to support our families. Recruiting and training staff to work as liaisons, ambassadors, and/or interpreters. I currently have one of my personal care assistants, who's a Barnstable graduate, who is bilingual, is working with the DESI program so that she'll be a trained ambassador to then be able to help with our Portuguese-speaking families when they come into the buildings. And then trying to recruit some others as well. And then ultimately, I'd like to create a multilingual liaison position at Centerville in the upcoming budget. So you'll be hearing more about that when we come into our budget year. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share Hyannis West's school improvement plan. When our school reflected on last year's school improvement plan, there was a lot to celebrate. We successfully completed our first year of DESI's Tiered Literacy Academy. We increased our family communication through welcome meetings and increased communication. We researched schools that have similar demographics to learn about their best practices, but in the end, we ended up validating and appreciating our own practices. We were doing quite well. So as a result, we achieved our highest student growth percentiles on the STAR Early Literacy and Reading Assessments, and 70% of our multilingual learners made effective progress on access compared to 47% the year before. So the MCAS doesn't tell the whole story. Just saying. So this year's school improvement plan is about-
I could tell those numbers in a different meeting. I'm not done yet.
That I know. Just had to plug it. So this year-
More than MCAS.
Yeah. This year's school improvement plan is about building on our previous success and strengths involving all of our stakeholders in creating a document that aligns with and drives the work that we do every day. One of our guiding principles at Hyannis West is teaching social emotional skills is as important as teaching academic skills, and I hope that's reflected in our plan tonight. So you'll see the same district objectives as, as others have talked about, a culture of belonging. So our bulleted points there. I'm trying to think. I made some changes. I don't know if this was the last document, but hopefully it'll match up. So responsive classroom, we were lucky enough to have a representative from responsive classroom in the spring come to Hyannis West, and we identified our strengths as a school and a few areas for improvement. We are looking at their data as a baseline or a starting point for us, and we are going to identify monthly responsive classroom practices to focus on as a school, perform learning walks to notice patterns and trends, and to unpack the results at staff meetings, to enhance the culture of our school that is already very positive. So our family involvement, our original plan was to increase family involvement opportunities this school year, but then we kind of paused. And we realized that as a school, we first need to understand the bigger picture of family involvement and engagement, what that actually means, what best practices are so that we can be more intentional and culturally responsive when communicating and planning our family events. So we want to input, we wanted input from our, we want to get input from our families to drive this process. And I have to give a shout out to Maura Bunchu, who's done, who's our family and community engagement coordinator. And she's also a Hyannis West School Council member, and she has a lot of expertise and has had a lot of training through the DESI, through DESI for that, for family engagement. And she has shared a lot of her expertise with us, and we want that to continue. Staff and family sharing sessions, gathering continuous input from all stakeholders is critical to our school. So two times per month, I meet, I hold optional sharing sessions for our staff members, one afternoon and one morning. The goal of these meetings is to listen, to share, to celebrate, to identify barriers, and to take action to remove those barriers. For families, for their sessions, we have started the process by asking families what they want to learn about, what they want more information about, and we've had an amazing response. That feedback was then shared with staff and is being used to plan two family sharing sessions per month. Again, one during the day, one at night, having a virtual option as well. And then both staff and family surveys will help us to gauge the effectiveness of, of those sessions. What's not up there that we did add at the final hour was a student ambassador program. We do have that for our third graders to promote leadership. We have improved the program that we had in the past. And like the real world, students have to complete an application to be in a student ambassador. They go through an interview process. They are assigned jobs around the school, like monitoring halls, reading with younger students, or taking them on walk breaks. They conduct tours for our new students in their native language, whatever that is, which one, and helping at recess and sometimes to even support our administrative assistant or even administrative tasks that we might need. So monthly meetings with the ambassadors focus on building leadership skills. And the process continues throughout the year so that more students can have the opportunity to get involved and to be leaders. Around rigorous curriculum and effective engaging instruction, we also completed year one of our Tiered Literacy Academy, so we are in year two. We have increased this year. We had an eight-person team last year, and now we have a 10-person team, which covers every grade level and every department within our building. So we have a great representation. They attend monthly coaching sessions, then bring that information back to the staff. And our professional development is much more positive and productive when teachers are teaching teachers. We also, like you've heard before, we are involved in the GLEAM grant work in the first year, and it's aligned directly with our tiered literacy work, which is nice. Our school is focusing on the four goals of this work, not just the materials, but also high expectations, the high-quality culturally responsive materials and resources, and also student engagement. We have two teachers who are leading this work at our school and sharing, again, that information with the rest of our staff. Alignment and coherence with the math curriculum across grade levels. We are seeing gaps. Our performance in math is not where we want it to be either, so we want to ensure that math doesn't get left behind with all of the work we're doing with literacy. So our focus is on collaborating vertically, K to three, so we can ensure that number sense, critical thinking, and problem-solving strategies that are needed in the upper grades can be built early on in a more intentional and consistent way. And we will also utilize our district math coach to support us in that work. I had a big note slide. So data-driven decision-making and shared responsibility is our school-based goal, and that is an area where we would like to improve. There's a lot of places to obtain data, but if you don't use it for the right reasons, it's, it's just data. So we first want to identify a strength of our school, actually, is to meet all students where they're at and to ensure that they all make effective growth. And that means utilizing relevant assessments. This year, all teachers will understand how to administer the STAR and CBM, which stands for curriculum-based measurement, progress monitoring tools, and how to set individual goals for their students based on their individual learning needs. We will also hold monthly data meetings in ELA, both ELA and math. And this year is our focus to just have those meetings to be more effective. I will be providing the appropriate time for educators to review and analyze the relevant data. The goal is for teachers to leave those meetings knowing where their students are, what interventions they will need, who will provide it, and what the area of focus will be. And finally, our social emotional data is always important to us. We collect it, we've always collected it in this area, but we want to take time to review it. The weekly office call data with our student support team, we want to share that out to the entire staff and then provide strategies and ideas for addressing those needs as a whole school. I also communicate that information about our SEL data to families so that they can share in supporting us with how they can help at home as well. So it is a true team effort. So I hope that is reflected in the plan.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
West Villages, Wendy.
That was so nice. I realized, as I sat here and looked at both screens, I might need to change my glasses to transition, because this is not easy to do. So thank you for having me and representing West Villages and talking about our school improvement plan. I think one of the nicest things this year is that we're all on board with the district goals of these first two, culture of belonging and rigorous curriculum and vision of a Barnstable graduate. And I think it's nice that we're all aligning ourselves with that. It may look a little bit different at each school, but we all have the same goal in mind. So starting with that culture of belonging, at West Villages, I continue to send the Friday updates to not just families, but to staff, so everyone knows what's going on and what's coming up moving forward. But we added an additional newsletter that we send to families and to the staff that kind of give a picture into the school day for students, and they have pictures of students. So you may see some, like, the Fire and Police Academy, or the excitement over the traverse wall that the Cobb Fund provided us. It wasn't just excitement for students. We had some teachers that found that they really wanted to try to traverse the wall. If you know some of the teachers at West Villages, you might be able to guess who they are. So that's been a lot of fun. But it's kind of bringing everything in this year and not tying a bow on it, but really pulling in the community. The firemen, the SRO, working together to work with kindergarteners every month, and then first graders, work with the fire department on a weekly basis, talking about their jobs and safety. And all of those things are really important to our kindergartners and first graders. So we are working to also increase school events for families by adding a math night and an ELA night in the spring. I feel like a lot of the things we do are almost done by the winter, and then we don't have an opportunity to bring people back in again. So we're trying to create opportunities to bring our families and the community back into West Villages. We have also worked really hard in trying to recruit classroom volunteers. Being a former reading specialist, reading to kids is one of, something that's near and dear to my heart. And so I think it's important that even if someone just wants to come in and read to a class, that they feel comfortable doing that. We have seen an uptick in the volunteerism during the day at school, whereas before it was either before school or after school, and now we're seeing more, more people volunteer and wanting to come in and support classes during the day. Another focus that we have is to monitor and prove attendance, just like everyone else. We're looking at attendance data that is not fantastic all the time. So we meet monthly with our student support team to talk about attendance. We make phone calls home so that parents know that we really care and we really want their student to come to school. We also put them in contact with some community supports if need be. But we're really reaching out, picking up the phone, having conversations with people so that they know we care. We celebrate attendance monthly, and we celebrate behavior expectations monthly as well. So you'll see the school-wide PBIS All-Star Program where the students are giving, given stars when they are caught doing something that's positive behavior or helping someone. And so at the end of the month, we celebrate those students and read off their names and give them a special pencil. The other goal that is a district-wide goal as well is the rigorous curriculum. And so this goes back to that GLEAM PD that everyone's been talking about. The whole school participates in the GLEAM professional development. Myself and Jen Hemmer, our reading specialist, are on the GLEAM team. We've had many, many meetings about GLEAM, and we send out information weekly to keep the staff updated on what's going on. And we try to answer all of their questions. And if we can't, then we'll go to Kristin and ask. We've made a huge effort to put in not just weekly learning walks, but daily learning walks, so that we're in classes every day for at least, well, under 10 minutes, but several over the course of 30 minutes. So we're trying to put those in our schedule. We're walking through, and we're giving teachers feedback. We want to see things like, are the students actively engaged? Are they having joyful learning experiences? Do we see smiles? Do we see the interaction between students and teachers and students and students working together and collaborating? So we report back out to the teachers that we've observed and let them know that we're seeing some of those things in our classrooms, and that makes us really happy. We also increase communication with staff at the professional development and the PLCs, like I said, with communicating out from the learning walks. And we have just finished our first round of implementing DESI's Early Literacy Screening and sending out that communication snail mail to our families so that they know if their, if their child is someone who's receiving some extra help or extra support at our school. if their, if their child is someone who's receiving some extra help or extra support at our school. So we're looking to do that again in January, but we just finished it for the fall. And then, similar to Kathy's, we have our MTSS team. So we started our MTSS team last year. And I think by the end of the year, we found that we were, we helped some children. We supported many children, but we wanted to be more aligned. We wanted to have an end goal that we all had that vision towards, this is what we want for our students. So we continue to learn. We continue to have discussions. We have monthly and weekly meetings, monthly meetings with interventionists, English language teachers, special education teachers. And then we also have weekly meetings with school counselors. We find that having these meetings and sitting down for at least 30 minutes a month or even week helps that team come together to make better decisions and supports for our students. We're using our academic data. We're looking at our social-emotional data to look at the whole child in our MTSS team. We're kind of grassroots, trying to push the whole all-hands-on-deck to help our students. So at one of our first MTSS meetings, when they felt that two students needed some extra support in reading, I couldn't help but say, oh, I'll take her. Just, just give her to me at 1:15 every day and I'll read with her. And so Dylan Bissonette, our assistant principal, said, oh, you know what? I'll take someone too. So it's growing rapidly. One of our AAs is thrilled every day to read with a student. And you know, it's sometimes just those small things that bring the light, you know, and just make, fill your heart and make you so happy. So some of those things I don't get to do as much anymore. So this is kind of, it's really nice that I get to sit with this little girl every day and read with her. And I think she seems very happy and I'm thrilled to do it. So the last thing we have is the implementation of the district curriculum accommodation plan, which we've shown to teachers. It helps us in our MTSS work because these are accommodations that are for all students. So when we look at them and we review them, it helps give us some insight into where we need to work with our students. After that, we'll start to work on our school accommodation plan. We're not there yet, but that's something that we hope to have working on throughout the year. And I put the pictures at the bottom to show you a first-grade classroom. These are first graders in a, in a reading group on the first one. Students working collaboratively and then students working independently. So when we do our walkthroughs and we walk into a first-grade classroom and we see this whole orchestra going on at the same time, it's a beautiful thing. Six-year-olds working independently, collaborating with one another, and learning in a small group. So I, we saw it that day and we were like, let's take pictures of this. This is exactly what we always want to see, that small group instruction that's really targeted to what our students need. Any questions?
Any questions? Seeing none, I think we're all set. Thank you, Wendy. Mike? Welcome.
Good evening. All right. So one of the things that I get, whether I'm talking to a prospective candidate or someone in the community, is, wait, your elementary school has 36 classrooms. And they're kind of taken aback by that. And obviously, it's, it's a lot larger than these five schools here. And I think one of the things that that obviously extends to community members when they send their student to Barnstable United. You know, it's much larger enrollment-wise and space-wise than their, you know, smaller K to three schools. So one of the things we're really trying to do with the culture of belonging is make it small for students. And one of the things we decided to do this year, we moved from Sheldon the Turtle mascot, I'm sorry, Peter, but to the Red Hawk as a mascot, because it really is the first time that all students in Barnstable come together. And that's certainly just kind of a thing in name only. But the real main thing is dividing students up into six houses, six times six, 36. All right. So what do we do in those houses? We have monthly house meetings, which are much smaller. Because when I bring the whole school together, we can't even fit in the bleachers in the gym. All right. We have students sitting on the floor. So in these smaller house meetings, we can really focus on building community, whether it's working on safety, whether it's working on responsibility, whether it's working on ownership, and really get the message home to students in a much easier environment than a giant gym with kids sitting on the floor being really wiggly. And that really has led into our new PBIS system, which involves getting students SOAR tickets. All right. And they can earn these SOAR tickets. They're basically given a ticket for caught being good or making good choices, which is the opposite of how I've gotten a ticket, but that's a whole nother story. And then the really cool thing about this house system is now that we've started it, the teachers can take control and kind of put their little spin on it. So one of the houses did a community service project, which was Treats for Troops, where students could donate their uneaten Halloween candy, whether they chose it or mom and dad chose to donate it. And they, it was collected over, you know, I don't know, it was 100 pounds of candy. I have some groups looking into, you know, working with, bringing students over to the senior center, possible fundraisers. So teachers are really going to be able to put their spin on this house system. So I think it's a really positive thing to try to make BES a bit smaller. In terms of curriculum, you've heard obviously a lot on GLEAM. While we don't necessarily have as much as their early literacy, a lot of the PD has been on reading complex texts because texts, certainly as they get in the fourth and fifth grade, especially in social studies and science, are getting more difficult, which causes students to struggle. So it's working with teachers in terms of classroom teachers. All right, how can we take a complex text and break it down and make it interactive? And that students can really delve into it and get to understand what it means versus kind of listening to someone read it and glossing over. You know, one of the things I think Kathy mentioned before was that happens in our buildings. You have students who are below reading level, but not necessarily because it's an upper grade level. You don't necessarily have, you know, whether it's the materials or just so many students working at beginning reading. And one of the things we're doing is we're trying to work with classroom teachers in terms of phonics instructions during our intervention block, and I'll talk about more on that later. It's PD on writing instruction in terms of looking at MCAS results. You know, writing is really one of the places where we need to move forward. Earlier today, talked about the transition in 2019 to typing on the MCAS. Personally, I think it's horrible because if you have a blank sheet of paper in front of you, the natural inclination is to fill it up. Whereas if you have a text box in front of you, even though we tell them it gets larger and larger the more and more they write, it's, oh, I only have to write, you know, two inches of words. I'm good. So we'll have more instruction on that. In terms of mathematics, the daily instruction, instructional model, specifically working with EL students in language. You know, you think, okay, math, it's all numbers. Anybody can do it. English, you know, can be your second language. It's so vocabulary-intensive. And, you know, really working with classroom teachers to help give them the tools to take a student who is a beginner in English, okay, they don't have to take the MCAS because they've, they haven't been here a year, but they're in the math class getting the instruction. You know, they're pulled out of EL services out of the ELA block, which makes sense. But how do we help those students excel in math? Because they may be amazing math students if we're able to teach that class in Spanish or Portuguese. But what kind of supports can we provide to those students so they can excel in math even though there's a language barrier? And then specifically, not necessarily specifically in math, but certainly with the intervention block, working on small group targeted instruction. So, oh, wait, we have this here. So the school objective has to do with this intervention block, which I've mentioned. And it's basically, what does a certain student need at that time? Last year, we did not have the intervention block. We had longer instructional block. And students were getting pulled out of either the second third or the last third of their instructional block. And okay, we could provide students with some things they needed in a specialized setting, but we found it was very disruptive to students. Imagine if you vanish during the middle third of this meeting and you come back into it and you're like, wait, what did I miss? Right? Or you had to leave before it was over, and again, what did you miss? So with the 50-minute intervention block, it allows students, whether they're getting EL services, special education services, gateway, Title I or school counseling, to get that specific student what he or she needs. Like thinking about Title I, like we're a whole school Title I, but in reality, my six interventionists are pulling students multiple times a week, so the same student, if they're, you know, at that intervention level and providing reading or math interventionist, intervention, I'm sorry. So, you know, it really allows us to try to meet students where they need to be so that we can get them up in grade, to grade level, like using that Title I as an example. What questions do you guys have for me?
I just got one question.
Yeah, Mike?
So in the, in the intervention block, right? So the kids who need all of the extra services or different services, they get it during that 50 minutes. What do the rest of the kids do during that 50 minutes?
So that's actually one of the real cool things with that. I think I talked a little bit about small group targeted instruction. It leaves teachers with the other students in their class who they can then, you know, instead of having a class of 21 in front of them, maybe they have 12. And kind of like the slide a couple before with Wendy, you know, you can do centers, right? And so that teacher there can target the students who are remaining in his or her classroom.
So just going on with that, so say you have the two teachers, what is it, English and?
English and math.
English, math, and then history, science, right?
Well, English, his, English, social studies, math, science.
Okay, yeah. So if you're the English teacher and I'm the math teacher and a student needs help in like, extra help in math. So would they go over to the other teacher on that team? So like, it's not like just that teacher. If you're my teacher, if you're my kid's teacher and you're an English teacher, and my kid doesn't need help with English or history, but they need it with math, they can go over to the math teacher into that small group and get the extra help over there?
Yeah, one of the benefits of podding, obviously, is that communication that's occurring between the teachers.
Those two teachers are together.
So we're really getting the specific students what they need on that pod if they're left. Not just because they're in my homeroom, they're stuck doing extra writing.
Right.
Versus if they're in another homeroom, they have the opportunity to do additional math problems.
Right.
It's really getting them.
So it's the two pods are connected.
Correct.
So if, if you're the math teacher, but my kid needs English, they're going to go over to the English teacher next door, who's part of your pod?
Correct.
Okay. So that truly is helping the kids in all four, four subject matters?
Yes, that's, that's the idea.
If they need to, right, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, just briefly, it's good to see you, Mike. I remember this summer I had my cousin at the high school, touring the high school.
Yes.
And one of the things that you mentioned that was, that was quite impactful is the importance of finding your tribe. You know, so the high school, obviously large, 2,000 students, my cousin coming in from the great state of New Jersey. The family, they, they moved, they live in Harwich, so she's, we lost her to Montemoy. But you noted, it's a big place. But when you're able to find that tribe, you know, that's when you can kind of, you know, you know, hit your stride and move forward. So very encouraging. Six, six different houses or teams. This transition, we have difficult transitions in the, in the district, there's no secret. But this might be the most precipitous because coming from those smaller elementary schools to, to a, a large, large building, in, in fourth grade, it, it's, it can be daunting. So what the measures that you're taking to address this are promising. Along with, Mike, to your point, this intervention block in terms of, you know, there's, there's a, there's a need and we're getting you attention on a consistent basis, that that's also something that's good to hear.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Anything else?
Peter, do you have anything? No, you're all set.
Thank you.
Kathy, you're all set. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Jason?
Good evening, everyone. All right. So thank you for letting me speak on behalf of Barnstable Intermediate. We've had a great start to the school year. As we reflected back in spring and summer, when we started to write our school improvement plan for this year. We went back and we looked at the feedback. We looked at the data. We looked at a lot of what the students were saying, a lot of the parents, the community. And as you know, the district's first strategic objective is about a culture of belonging, a safe and inclusive climate, and a shared vision of student success. Because of this, our first school improvement goal at BIS revolves around school culture and climate, specifically creating a safe, orderly, and respectful environment for students and a collegial and collaborative culture among teachers. Our goal with our first initiative is to establish and maintain an inclusive school environment that fosters a collaborative learning community between staff and students. With this, we have two objectives. Our first is to increase positive student behaviors and positive staff-to-student relationships. And our second is to create opportunities for students to act as equal partners in their learning. Steps that we will take or we have taken in to complete our objectives will be to develop a school-wide PBIS plan that has clearly defined student behaviors in all school settings, common language, which is extremely important in our school, regardless of what pod, what community you're in. We need to have common language throughout. Create a plan to teach, encourage, monitor, and celebrate positive student behaviors and teacher implementation. And to create a student leadership team to ensure continued student voice in the school's decision-making. I didn't get my pictures in there. I do apologize. The district's second strategic objective outlines a rigorous curriculum and effective engaging instruction that is aligned with the vision of a Barnstable graduate. Because of this, our second school improvement goal at BIS focuses on intentional practices for improving instruction, employing intentional practices for improving teacher-specific and student-responsive instruction. Our goal is to establish a clear vision of rigorous, high-quality teaching and learning through a system of continuous, growth-producing feedback that supports student achievement. With this, our two objectives will be, one, to utilize a common learning plan to create rigorous, standards-based lessons that target academic language skills in all four domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, which is extremely important. And second, to focus on school-wide implementation of instructional strategies of feedback and collaboration according to clear and accessible criteria for students. We want our staff to collaborate. We want our students to sit, our staff for that matter, to sit down and look at what our students are doing. We spoke about the Patriots. We threw a little pun on how poor they're playing. And I chalk up collaborating as the X's and O's in education. How do we know students are getting the assignment? How do we know students are completing the task? It's by looking at student work. It is the X's and O's. And we're putting a huge focus this year on having our staff collaborate so they can look at the X's and O's. Are the students getting this? If they're not getting it, why? And go back to our lessons and make sure that our lesson design allows for, start to finish, of good, high-quality teaching. So steps that we have taken or we will take to complete our objectives will be to establish a clear vision of and expectations for rigorous, engaging, and high-quality instruction, develop a learning walk tool that will assess the effectiveness of meeting instructional expectations, as well as a lesson plan template that all staff can use that embeds best teaching practices, and to develop a feedback protocol used throughout all PLCs to facilitate discussions. We've started to implement learning walks. And again, for us, learning walks is for us to be able to go in and see, are the teachers able to implement these lessons? What are creating the obstacles that are preventing the teachers for implementing these lessons? And extremely important that all of our teachers are teaching the same standards. If we're all educators, I don't expect you to teach the same way I taught. But the goal is to get to the same standards. So a big focus of our school is to personalize the work. We want our lessons to be personalized to all students. Teacher creates a lesson plan. You have 25 students in the, in the class. You have to create a lesson that's going to support all 25 students to reach grade-level proficiencies or above. That's extremely difficult. That is the difficult part of what we do. So how do you do that in 50 minutes? And for us, as the instructional leaders of the building, to go in and see those lessons, to see those lessons in action, to look at the X's and O's. We can give that constructive feedback to help and support our staff. But more importantly, the staff can now collaborate and they can look and see, why did that class get it and my class didn't? We're going to the same standards. I have the same students. What's going on? What is different? So we really put a strong emphasis on that collaboration piece, making sure that all of our lessons, all of our units are aligned to standards. And more importantly, of our lessons, all of our units are aligned to standards, and more importantly, having some of our teachers that have done this for five, 10 years, come in with a sense of knowledge. I've done this, here are the obstacles that I've had to overcome, to some of our more novice teachers that are coming in, their first and second year, they have all these fantastic ideas, I have a teacher come in, they give me a lesson plan, I look at the lesson plan, you have 50 minutes, this lesson plan's gonna take five hours. So it's kind of bringing our staff back to the reality of, we have great ideas, but let's put it on paper, let's look at the Xs and Os, and let's look at the operations of it. That's a big focus of our PLCs this year. To go back to a question that you asked about, you know, what's going on in our schools, you know, we're not satisfied with the, the outcome. We know where we are, and our staff has accepted that. We're not happy about it, but we, we would be naive to say, oh, we're not that, we are X, Y, and Z, and as Bill Parcells once said, you are what your record says you are. And we have to go back and understand that we are only performing better than 19% of schools in the state of Massachusetts. So what can we do differently? And I think by using the wealth that we have in our building, by collaborating with one another, and really looking at why students aren't getting the big picture, that's gonna help us open a lot of doors. And I think a lot of our struggles is not so much a Barnstable issue, you know, I'm gonna bring up my son, uh, regular student, does a good job, came home two, three weeks ago and an assignment was to talk about the Neolithic Age, I hope I said that correctly, and to write two, uh, paragraphs on what you believe are the two most important aspects of the Neolithic Age. So I look at his work, and he starts rifling off all of these just facts, 30 facts, and he goes, Dad, look at this, and I'm like, that's great, that wasn't the assignment. So I think one of the biggest challenges that we have at our schools, the students don't even understand and can comprehend what the assignment is asking them to do. And then take it one step further, what is your game plan? And a lot of our students, including my son, didn't have a game plan. So when we broke down the question, the question was asking, don't tell me 50,000 things about the Neolithic Age, tell me the two most important things and give me the evidence to back up your claims. He folded, he goes, oh, my God. That's what a lot of our students do. So a lot of this work is gonna give them the extra effort, it's gonna give them the stamina, right? We want our students to go 12 rounds in the ring, and we're not talking figuratively put on 14-ounce gloves and box, we're talking about, take a passage, make meaning to what the author is saying, and then extrapolate it and put it in a way that you can let us know what that means. That translates to real-world situations. If you're gonna say a claim, you need to back it up with some evidence and some reasoning, and this is a school-wide focus that we're putting into these lessons. We want the students to be able to articulate what it is that the author is saying, but we also want the lessons to allow the teachers to hear and take a step back, and let those misconceptions kind of guide the lesson. And I think that's a big piece that if we put a lot of focus on, we're gonna see a huge improvement in the coming years. Questions?
Any questions? Peter?
Yeah, I have one, that, the great presentation, uh, Jason. I've been out of teaching a couple of years, you'll have to explain this one to me. BIS will create opportunities for students to act as equal partners in their learning.
It's that integrity piece, we want the students to own their work, we want the students to sit down and look at the Xs and Os of what they did, but take ownership on where they could have done a better job. And I think that takes a step forward to having that stamina. We don't want the students to look at a, a, a document, and if the document's asking them to answer it in two sentences, have them write two sentences and say, here you go, and walk away from it. We want them to go a step further. We want them to take ownership on, yes, you did the assignment, but could you go one step further? And have them look in the mirror and own the fact that, you know what, I could have put more time into doing my work, I could have asked more questions. That ownership piece, that integrity piece, that's in our matrix, and that's something that, that's common language throughout our building. We want our students to own what we, they did, which is perfectly fine, but now what's your game plan to go one step further?
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yes, uh, so, so wonderful, uh, the sports references are tremendous, uh, I know it's been a lot of folks, so we've been there, so I'm gonna keep this, uh, but, but, but I really appreciate, you know, you giving a, a realistic and honest perspective of, uh, of what's going on in, in the building, you know, because that's what really, at the bottom of the, at the end of the day, interests me. Uh, obviously, a lot of talent in terms of our leadership and people leading schools and, you know, big position, school committee, that's all good, and, uh, um, but what's actually happening on a day-to-day basis? You know, I'm not for the, I'm not for the pomp and circumstance.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm for, you know, what's actually going on. And start with me, um, so I'm not gonna get too deep, so I really appreciate, you know, you give me, in terms of what's, um, you know, what, what's actually, what's, what's um, and so the things that you've outlined, it's challenging, uh, for teachers. actually happening, um, I just wanted to voice my support in terms of how you're tackling
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, let's know, you know, the, the, you, you, seventh grade, a, and they're, this a, a, and looking at it in, in an honest way. they're, they're pushing back, and they're also notably, notably behind in some areas. I'm somebody that taught seventh grade, um, over the last two years, um, gave one pink And you're a tremendous teacher, and you know what, what to do and how to do these things, so I'm going on, and you guys have been here for a long time, uh, very, uh, slip in that time, uh, which I'm, which I was proud of, uh, a, a, and so the fact that, thank you for the presentation and the honesty, and, and how you're, uh, navigating and attacking you know, you're talking about these po, positive relationships between the students and, and making strides. and the teachers, um, while also noting, and being honest, frankly, whi, which I just
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be quick also, I just wanted to say, what I hear you saying when
keep, keep harping on that, not only do we have transitions in this district that are
you describe what you're looking for in the students is resilience-
Absolutely.
hard, um, but when we have transitions, and then you're talking about this sixth and
And, and accepting constructive criticism, and I think those two pieces are difficult
seventh grade where students are becoming a little bit more opinionated.
for students to learn, and you can't just throw it at them once, they, it actually
We're seeing a little bit, they're becoming a little bit more forceful, Liz is not here, but we note in terms of what's going on at the high school at eighth grade, that seems
starts very early, um, and if they can develop resilience and accept criticism and realize
to be the area, that year, where, where, where students, you know, it's a transition, and then you're just an eighth grader.
that if they do something incorrectly, and they're, it's explained and they're asked
Sure.
Um, a, and so in your building, um, some of these, uh, you know, you know, Mike talks
to do it over, that that's not failure, that that's an opportunity, and I think it makes
about, you know, pint-sized problems at the elementary level, uh, but by the time now they're getting to you, you know, that, that they're fully fleshing out some of these
my job, where I'm at, doing the same thing everybody else, K pre-K to, to 12 is doing,
things.
They're 5'8" now.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Versus the pint-sized.
And, and you got your adolescents, you know, that's, uh, but, but you, you're not,
it's that resilience piece that I've seen drop off.
you know, as you noted in terms of the equal partnership, um, you know, you're below grade
Sure.
Um, nobody wants to turn anything in that might be wrong, and they wanna rely on
level as Kathy, you know, and sometimes, you know, because these things have just compiled,
others, a, and they're afraid to make a mistake, so they freeze.
um, a, a, and it's just a very volatile mix, frankly.
And that, when they get to me as adults, that's really hard, that's really hard to
Sure.
get them over the hump, so I think that the resilience at the, at the intermediate level can help with the mental health, it can give them strength that they, they can grow into, and then when they feel more positive about their schoolwork, they feel more positive about themselves, so thank you for that hard work, and God bless everybody who teaches at BIS, that, that grade level, they're one day like kids and one day pushing against, pushing against the grain, so I think it takes a special person over there.
We have wonderful staff, and they'd be the first to say they know we have challenges ahead, and they've admitted the challenges, but I think they're up for the task, and I think as the building principal, it starts with me, and to know that I have a staff that's behind me that wants to go that extra mile, the students are gonna see it as well, and I think that trust is gonna go into the classrooms when we do push our students, they know that we're pushing with the whole idea that we believe in you. If you push someone and they know that you don't believe in them, they're not gonna go the next mile. So we have to continue to build that level of security that we believe in you, but we're not gonna have you just settle for mediocre, we're gonna have you push to where we know you can, and we want the students to leave the class every time with their head held high, that I gave 50 minutes. You know, that resiliency is going the 12 rounds, basically, don't just back out in round two.
Well, thank you all very much, um, we've taken enough of your time, thank you very much for, um, presenting your plans, and, um, with that, have a good night, and as I said to the last group, you don't have to stay around.
I just say one thing, Mike-
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I couldn't be more proud, I wrote a note to Kristen over here, um, I love this district, and, uh, it's a reflection of the team that just presented, and they operate at such a high level. You made it look easy, but I will share with you, they are working so hard, they are at it every day, um, this is very difficult work, and I'm just really proud, so wanted to just share that as a concluding remark, so thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Have a good night.
And, um, can I interject too, that the volleyball team won, uh, three to, three to nothing. I've been, I've been sitting on that for maybe about 45 minutes, but I didn't wanna steal your thunder.
Okay, uh, moving on to- One more, that's, that's, would be like the semifinals, right? So now there's just gonna be the finals?
Do you know where the game? The finals?
I don't know, I'm not sure, they had to probably figure out, what's that? Oh, at, oh, at DCU Center in Worcester? Is that where they are? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to 4.4, which is the, uh, approved superintendent's evaluation. So for the public, um, the way this works is, uh, this has been a two-year, uh, this is a first-year process, we met, we each met with Sarah in the middle of last year, had a verbal conversation about where we thought things were going, um, and then this is the end-of-the-year written evaluation. As I have always said, um, I don't believe it's appropriate to, the state says we have to do it in public, um, I don't think it's appropriate to give anybody an evaluation, none of us would like to have, um, an evaluation done in public, um, so, but we've all met at the end of the year, we've all met with Sarah, um, and then what we do is we put it in writing, there's a, um, it's a, it's a superintendent evaluation, it's an educator evaluation, um, so we've all done our individual, and then what we do is the four of us do our individual, then we give it to Jen, Jen kind of compiles them into, um, one final evaluation. Uh, one thing I will tell the public, 'cause I'm not gonna, um, go through everything, um, it's a public document, if anybody is interested in reading any of the four of ours individuals or the cumulative one, um, they can go, they can do a public records request, and they can get, um, that evaluation. So if you noticed, just for the four of us, if you notice, I think, I think the way Jen kind of does it, and I think in the past is, our overall, she kind of like takes it, copies and paste what, I think, if you probably look, I know what I wrote was all there, I think, I think, so what they do, what she does is, uh, the, the, um, our comments are actually all put in into the final one, which I think is like the fairest way, because we all have our own opinions and we all wanna give our, and that should be part of the final evaluation, but, um, and just for you all to know that the, the one, and I know I said this when you were filling it out, but, um, everything is public record, um, so anybody who wants to see the public record of, like I said, each of our individuals or as cumulative, um, has the right to ask for it. Other than that, um, is there any other questions or comments about it? Everybody kind of all set? Yeah? Okay. Excellent, we will now move on to-
We have to vote.
Uh, no, we don't, do we? Oh, yeah, we do, sorry, can I get a?
So, move to approve the superintendent evaluation for 2022, 2023 is presented in tonight's materials.
A second.
I have a motion and second, Sarah, is there anything that you wanna say about this, or are you?
I just, I wanna thank the committee members for, um, both the conversations and the written feedback, and, um, really appreciate, uh, all of your insight and guidance over this year. I take the comments and the feedback to heart, I think you know, and, um, you know, look forward to incorporating it into my practice in the coming year and the work of the district, so thank you.
Having a motion and second, and voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, no. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 4.5, approved superintendent's goals and focus indicators for 23, 24. So just for the public, we just finished last year's, and now we have the goals for this year's. So Sarah?
Um, thank you, um, so I think, um, this should be familiar, um, related to the evaluation process, uh, and so I'll go quickly, um, for the public, we're at the, uh, goal setting and plan development, um, at this point in time, based on the self-assessment, which is, um, in part, feedback from the evaluation that I just received, as well as, um, my own reflection on, uh, the first year in the district. Uh, my evaluation is comprised of, uh, progress towards the district improvement goals, which are typically two to four goals, we have four goals approved in September. Uh, tonight, I'll be talking about a student learning goal and a professional practice goal, um, seeking your approval of those, and, um, evidence towards standards in the superintendent's rubric, and as a result of the self-assessment, as well as, I think, timing, um, not being a new superintendent here in Barnstable, uh, in my first year, as well as, um, what we're focusing on as a district, I have proposed a, a few changes to the focus indicators, um, which help me organize the evidence for you, although we certainly have had opportunities for conversations, as well as written feedback on other, uh, indicators, um, in the formal process. Um, so a reminder of the district improvement plan, um, the first two goals you heard a lot about tonight, uh, with the school improvement plan, um, but we are also looking around talent development, around our recruitment, retention, and development of our workforce, and also equitable school facilities, and a big focus on our facilities, both in terms of, uh, conditions as well as capacity. Um, in terms of my student learning goal, I previewed this as it relates to accountability, as I thought that this might be, um, the most justified and perhaps least arbitrary, um, target to set. Sometimes it can be hard to know what appropriate improvement would be, um, and so what I thought that I would do is focus improvement on the target that the Department of Education is setting, uh, around MCAS, and so, um, that manifests in the accountability indicators that we talked about earlier. Um, rather than looking at each and every accountability indicator, uh, I wanted to align this with our major efforts, um, for this year, which by and large focus on literacy, um, both, uh, K to five, you heard tonight Jason talk about, um, writing, uh, in grades six and seven, and there are also certainly things happening at the high school to focus on language development and, uh, ELA proficiency. So I pulled out the, uh, accountability indicators, uh, related to, to English, uh, or ELA, and have proposed a student learning goal related to improving in these improvement targets. The wording is a little clumsy, but I think the chart illustrates the intent or the meaning. So in, um, 2023, we received zero out of four points for ELA achievement for non-high school grades, and zero out of four in the high school grades. Um, and so I would propose to target at least a one, if not higher, out of four for ELA achievement in non-high school grades and in high school grades next spring. As far as growth goes, we talked about that being, uh, a different way of looking at our performance, we received growth, uh, for ELA of two out of four for non-high school grades and two out of four at the high school. I would propose to maintain that two at least, if not improve growth, uh, above two, a three out of four or a four out of four. And then progress towards attaining language proficiency, this is one of the areas of strength in the district, uh, we received three out of four points in this area, um, and I would propose to, uh, maintain that three, if not increase it to four out of four, and I'll give a shout-out to High West, they did get four out of four related to, uh, EL, uh, language proficiency, um, which I think is another way to sort of demonstrate, um, just how many nuances there are to the data that we have available to us to paint a full picture of how our students and our schools are doing. Um, so I would propose that in four out of the five, that I would hit four out of the five targets in that right-handed column, uh, as it relates to ELA achievement, growth, and language proficiency. And I would note, um, in terms of math, um, I think, uh, Kathy Amato brought up an important point, we certainly need to be focusing, uh, on math, um, it, it is an area that I think we are a little bit stronger in, just like the state in terms of the trends that we've seen, um, but to Mike Wojcowski's point, English is incredibly important to, uh, understanding math- achievement in non-high school grades and in high school grades next spring. As far as growth goes, we talked about that being a different way of looking at our performance. We received growth for ELA of two out of four for non-high school grades and two out of four at the high school. I would propose to maintain that two at least, if not improve growth above two, a three out of four or a four out of four. And then progress towards attaining language proficiency. This is one of the areas of strength in the district. We received three out of four points in this area. And I would propose to maintain that three, if not increase it to four out of four. And I'll give a shout out to High West. They did get four out of four related to EL, language proficiency, which I think is another way to sort of demonstrate just how many nuances there are to the data that we have available to us to paint a full picture of how our students and our schools are doing. So I would propose that in four out of the five, that I would hit four out of the five targets in that right-handed column, as it relates to ELA achievement, growth and language proficiency. And I would note, in terms of math, I think Kathy Amato brought up an important point. We certainly need to be focusing on math. It is an area that I think we are a little bit stronger in, just like the state in terms of the trends that we've seen. But to Mike Wojcowski's point, English is incredibly important to understanding math, particularly in the way that we have our math instruction set up, which I think is a worthy one. It's very language-based. And so I think by focusing on literacy, we will also see math improve as well. Are there any questions on this? I'll pause here.
Yeah, so you're saying that in the first two, in English language arts achievement for non-high school and for high school, you'll bring those numbers up one, but the last three, you'll maintain?
Maintain or increase.
But maintain as a minimum.
Maintain as a minimum.
So we won't drop. My, my only concern with these is, and I understand, as you've heard, I understand the whole MCAS isn't everything thing, but I'm concerned that, to me, that those last three means we're at where we want to be. And I don't think we are where we want to be. I think we need to push the envelope further and continue to improve. I mean, a lot of the scores I get, which we're closing the state gap, but I also agree with Peter and Kathy that we need to be at this state, not, and I understand it doesn't all happen in a year, I grant you that, but I'm concerned that if we're only maintaining that, I guess if you could explain to me how maintaining those numbers and not increasing them, how that would keep our gaps the same and not close them more. You know what I mean?
I do. I think that.
Am I looking at it wrong or?
No, no. I think at the district level, I think it's hard to have growth across every single data point, reach the four out of four. I think that when you're talking about percenta, percentages and medians, there's a lot that gets sort of smoothed out around the edges. So those twos reflect that moderate growth area.
But, so you want to maintain moderate growth?
We want to maintain moderate.
Do you want to excel it?
I think we'd love to see higher growth. I think that at the, I think we'll see pockets of high growth. I think at the district level, district-wide, I think it's hard for it to.
So this is district-wide numbers?
Statistically, these are district-wide numbers.
Okay, continue. Just kind of let me chew on that for a little bit.
I think if you wanted to push the envelope, moving, I think if you wanted to push the envelope, I would push the achievement scores from one to two. I think that would.
Yeah.
I think that would maybe meet your.
Well, so, so when we're talking about the last three, the first two, I'm not, like, I get that. The, the, so when you're talking about the growth and moving it from a two to a three, right, or even a two, what? So forty to sixty is moderate growth, sixty above is accelerated growth, below forty is no growth.
Low growth.
Right. So my question is, is, I guess what it is, I'm getting kind of confused because we're, we're giving, we're doing a lot of different things with these numbers and I'm, I'm starting to get kind of confused is, so we have the scores, kind of to go with what Kathy was saying. So we have the scores, and then I understand that growth is the zero to twenty, twenty to forty, forty to, or forty to sixty and above. But this is a whole nother set of numbers. And I'm kind of getting confused about, and if I'm getting confused and I'm on the school committee, what's the public looking and saying, what do they want to do now? So you're looking at it a third different way. We've looked at it, the numbers, we've looked at the growth, and now we're looking at these numbers. So if you're at a two for English language art growth, non-high school grades, you're at a two, what does that equate to in the zero to ninety-nine, as Kristen said?
So, great question. And I actually, I'm, I'm bringing up the.
You know what I mean? I'm just, I'm getting confused as to, I've always understood the growth that we want really forty to sixty at least as a minimum, but we really want to push sixty and above. So now these numbers are, these don't equate to anything.
I'm looking at the glossary of the reporting terms. This, the two would be forty to fifty. If that were three plus, that would be fifty and up. So high, moderate growth or high growth?
So you're saying you're gonna keep, maintain a forty to fifty?
Now that we're talking it through, I think three might be a more appropriate number for the.
Because you want to be in the high moderate. I understand that you don't want to be over sixty. I get that, like.
I think it's really hard.
No, especially district-wide. You're just not gonna do that. You're never ever gonna meet that, but.
But three, I think, is more appropriate.
Okay.
In the growth areas.
Do you guys get, do you guys get what I'm saying? Go ahead.
I do. The only thing.
Yeah.
Only thing I want to say about the growth is, if you, if you sit and look at it, if you have a student who's achieving high, and you're trying to increase the growth, they don't have as far to grow and still be at that highest standard. So that's going to skew the district overall number. If you have all, a, a large population of students whose achievement was very, very low, they have a better opportunity to grow. So the growth is, is hard to track. And then if they keep increasing the scores that are required to meet proficiency, which they do, even if you maintain the same level of growth coupled with the, the state increasing the bar, it, you're still, you're still at the same growth number, you're, you could actually be achieving greater growth.
Right. You're actually, if the bars, if the state kept the bar at the same spot, you would actually be increasing, increasing the growth, but because they're increasing it, even if you maintain, you're still increasing it. I get it. But one of the things that I would like to see for next month in the report, is I know that we only talked about proficiency. We used to always get the report. I'm sure it's just a different way to do it. But I would like to see where, how many kids are in, because to answer your question, how many kids are in high proficiency or what are, what are the categories? High profi, yeah, meeting, proficient and whatever.
Advanced.
Yeah, advanced, right? So I'd like to see where we are in the other two category, like the, the low kids. How many kids have gone from middle to low? Or do we have, because to me, that's a really important part.
It's a really important.
Because if we had twenty-five percent kids in low and now we have only five percent in low and we have more in proficient, that's like, that means we're doing good work. We're bringing, you know what I mean? So I, I just think that this is only one snapshot of the picture. Peter, you were gonna talk? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, I was following you very closely and as soon as we get into the growth talk, you know, my, my brain goes elsewhere. And.
Well, because you never looked at that. When you were a teacher, you never liked, that wasn't in the category. That's something that we knew.
I think I actually told Sarah this at one point, that when I was doing my own teacher goals, I simply said, I taught all AP at a time, at the time that I can remember this. And I just said, eighty percent of the kids will score three or better. And my evaluator always said, that's, that's tough. Why don't you do something? I said, I, you know, that's my goal.
Because you gotta push it.
And if they don't reach it, that's fine. When you get into these type of numbers, which I think I followed this chart more than I followed growth, loss, meeting, but I understood that. And I understand this chart, but I also understand MCAS scores. And, you know, I, I, I guess if I were superintendent, you don't have to follow my advice, I'd say our scores will meet state level. And that's my goal. I'd be done with it. I wouldn't, you know, but that's me.
I think, so in terms of the state level, what this is saying is it meet, we're working towards incrementally over time, progress towards those improved targets. So.
Okay. So what do people, like, it's, it's not up to me. Do, do people agree with what I was saying about upping those numbers? Or, I mean, do you agree? Or I'm, I'm kind of just throwing it out there. That's my.
Yeah.
My concern is, I agree with the state numbers as far as reaching it. I understand you're not going to do it. And so what I'm saying is, is instead of moving, closing the gap forty to fifty, I'm saying close the gap, what, fifty to sixty?
Yeah, so that would be three, that would be three plus. And I think.
So would you agree with just making it one, like, increase it to three? Not even three plus, I would say, because you're not going to hit four. That's, that's, I would say three.
I think four would be very hard.
No, I don't think that's realistic. But how about making it three?
For the growth ones?
Yeah, for. For growth for, for high school and non-high school? Or would you?
Yeah, I would do growth for high school and non-high school.
I mean, all that's saying is instead of doing low, moderate growth, you're gonna put it in the upper end of moderate growth. That's really what that's saying, correct? Yeah. And most of yours, I don't, I don't remember the growth part of it. I don't remember the.
We were at forty-eight for non-high school grades. And I think, I'm trying to go through while we're talking, forty-eight for ELA growth and forty-six for math growth.
I mean, is that a realistic goal?
High school was forty-six.
Forty-six and forty-eight. Do you think hitting fifty or better is a realistic goal? I don't know. I mean, district-wide?
We did it in some of our subgroups. Our EL and our African-American black subgroups were above fifty. I think.
Or do you have another, is your other part of your student goal, is it a better spot to put that than here? I don't know what your other goal was?
The other goal is a professional practice goal related to facilities.
Oh, okay. So this is the, this is the student one?
Yep.
I don't know. I'll throw it out there and let everybody else kind of decide.
Yeah, just for me, Mike, very good questions. You know, Peter, you know, state averages. My question regarding the state average, does that factor in, I want us to be compared to districts that have the same student populations. So we're saying state averages. So you, you know, you might have like one district, for instance, that's off the charts, then the other district, you know, is in receivership, and then the average is kind of the, you know, you know, that's good, you know. I'm interested in students with similar student populations and how we are tracking.
How we compare to them.
To them. Because clearly, you know, we have a, a, a high English language learner population. You know, we have, you know, students with, with, with high needs. You know, as, you, you, that's kind of what I'm, you know, we just saw, you know, the leadership team, you know, Sarah, Kristen, you know, in, in, saw on the fourth and central. I don't have any doubt that people are working very hard on a consistent basis. I'm just saying, to Peter's point, you know, a lot of numbers, just kind of help, that's, you know, pound for pound, districts that are like us, you know, have our student populations, that would give me, or, you know, Sarah, you know, it, it, does the state average mirror that? Is that the better indicator?
That's a really good way of looking at it.
So. That information is available on the Department of Education's website. There's the DART reports. So you can go on and check it out and look. And they do poll based on size and demographics. We can certainly highlight some of that when we come back in December to share some additional information, but there is the ability to, to look right at that.
Yeah, because that's apples to apples. Kathy, you have anything?
I don't, I don't think I have much to add that I didn't already say.
So my question is, do you, like I said, I, I don't want to put you on the spot. I don't want you to be like, Mike, I'm, there's no way I'm gonna get up that four points. I just don't understand, like, in my mind, it's like, oh, two points. Oh, that's not bad. But from your point of view, that may be like, yeah, two points is like moving the world, Mike. Like, that isn't that simple. You know what I mean? But I also want us to, and I know you're, I know that you're a very hard worker and I know that, like, this is important. So I, I don't want you to be like, yeah, no, I think we should do it because what the heck? Like, am I setting you up to fail?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so. I think that the message of high, moderate growth is a reasonable one. I think we do want to aim for growth numbers that are above fifty. So I'm comfortable with that being a three.
Okay.
In the growth area. And I'm proposing to meet it in eighty percent of the areas. And the ratings is not yes or no. There's significant progress, some progress around which you can evaluate the efforts that I've taken and the district has taken towards, towards the numbers. So I think, you know, in terms of what we sort of publicly message out, three in terms of our expectations for ourselves, I think is more appropriate.
Okay. So move those up to three. I wouldn't say three plus, I would just say three.
Three for the growth areas. And then as I'm looking too, at the, at the information about the data and going a little bit deeper, I would, I would challenge myself to hit two for the achievement.
On both of them?
Yep.
Okay.
And then try to strive for two, two, three, three.
You're gonna hate me next year. That's okay, Peter. I was the bad guy here.
She can demonstrate resilience.
And hard work, work ethic.
And if it, if, if it, I, I have confidence you can meet.
Oh, I think you are. I, I don't think I'm setting you up to fail.
But if you didn't, it, it's that piece that, you know, just.
This is how I'm working to do it.
We want our stu, we want our students to aim high and reach high and have high expectations. And so I think this just demonstrates the same for ourselves. And, you know, we'll see how we go.
I wouldn't have said it if I didn't think you could hit it. So.
It's, um, this is a new type of goal. I've not written a goal in this way, but when I saw our accountability information, it, to me, sort of distilled a lot of, a lot of numbers into something very focused.
Yeah, Mike, and just, so yes, and, and what I would just kind of say to myself, you know, it, it is good to set the lofty expectation, the lofty benchmarks. But, you know, in terms of what the, what the principals shared, I'll just say for my, you know, you talk about chronic absenteeism. You know, you talk about, you know, students that are, that are kind of below, below grade level. You know, those are the underlying factors. It's good to look at a chart and numbers, you know, and, and, you know, obviously there's the pressure, you know, to get to state level and to compete with these other districts, X, Y, and Z. But in real time, that's not going to happen if those crucial factors, specifically absenteeism, the students are not going to accelerate their growth if they're not in school. And so that's, you know, arrange it how you want to arrange it. You know, but those are, you know, being an educator and I'm on the school committee, those are the things that I'm looking at in terms of how we can narrow, you know, improve, like, those things have to be corrected, you know, before we can have, you know, gleaming test scores.
Right. I, I, to me personally, another one is discipline. Not discipline, but behavior, I'll say. If, if a teacher is spending a lot of time doing, dealing with behaviors, then they're not educating our kids. And I think, I think a big part of that is, is the mentors, as like, there's a whole lot of things we're bringing into our school system. And I think that is a big part of it, is behaviors. A lot of ti, a lot of time can be taken dealing with behaviors in a classroom instead of educating our kids. So I think that's another one too. But you're right. I, I don't disagree. Okay. So, sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. No, no, no. I paused.
So make those, just, we'll change those and you can move on.
Okay. I appreciate the conversation. I really do. These are not easy goals to craft. So thank you. Professional practice goal that I was thinking about, you know, particularly is I think about the district improvement plan. There's a lot of things that I could choose. But we do have an entire goal related to facilities. And I think it's a really big rock for us to tackle. And so I have written a professional practice goal that I anticipate will be a multi-year goal, related to leveraging the facilities, conditions assessment and capacity assessment to work on our short-term and long-term facilities, planning needs. It will require, and I think it ought to, professional practice goals ought to grow your practice and be an opportunity for learning. So I do anticipate engaging in additional professional development around skills and knowledge with respect to school facilities. I think already, having gone through the conditions assessment and capacity assessment has helped in that regard and is an example. But I also know that there's elements to learn related to facilities having to do with MSBA, whether or not we go and ask for support related to an accelerated repair project. I think there may be some opportunities to pursue from a PD standpoint. What are other districts doing around facilities? What do their staffing structures look like? I think that's something that we need to look at carefully in terms of whether or not we have enough staff to support our facilities' needs. Collaborating with. collaborating with our director and other stakeholders to address short-term capacity and maintenance needs. We're starting down that road with our capital plan, which is much more ambitious than it had been previously, and beginning a process with key stakeholders to address long-term facilities planning as well. So that's kind of an area that I thought would be a professional practice goal, not only for this year, but in the, in the coming years.
Any questions? No, no, excellent. Thank you.
And then, um, in terms of focus indicators, I, um, have selected six around the four standards. This does help me consolidate my evidence. It also aligns the educators in the district. I'm doing it last, but, um, we have focus indicators for teachers and counselors, as well as our building administrators every year. And so this is, you know, sort of consistent with the idea that we're all, we're all rowing in the same direction. And so these are indicators in standard one, instructional leadership. So I would propose to continue with instruction and then evaluation in terms of providing effective and timely supervision and evaluation to staff, working with them on their SMART goals, providing guidance to administrators and observations and feedback to them. Last year, in this area, the focus indicators were instruction and data-driven decision-making. So looking to switch that up to be consistent with our focus as a leadership team and with our, with our educators. In terms of standard two, two A is about the environment and would be a change from last year. And then the other one is two B, human resources management. I think two A speaks to our first district improvement goal related to culture and climate. Two B speaks to our third district improvement goal as it relates to talent development, recruitment, and retention. Two A is different than last year. Last year, two E was included, which was fiscal systems, which I think is important, and I think is important for a superintendent, but I'm not sure it's kind of the highest leverage in terms of, um, in terms of alignment to the district goals. I'll continue to work hard towards a good budget, no matter what. In standard three, um, these are different than last year. Last year was around communication. As a new superintendent for you, this year, I'm proposing sharing responsibility, which is a focus indicator for all of our educators across the district. So I feel like it would be important to align myself in that regard. I think an example of sharing responsibility came out nicely tonight. BUE talking about the intervention block and the pods of teachers sharing responsibility over supporting students and what they need, among other, among other examples. But that's an area that we're focusing on together as part of the MTSS model. And then in terms of professional culture, this one is different than last year. Last year was shared vision. I think hopefully you're seeing some consensus and kind of coalescing around a shared vision in the district and school improvement plans and how that trickles right down into the school setting itself. We have selected as a leadership team managing conflict, resolving conflict and building consensus. And so I would propose those as my focus indicators.
Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Andre, go ahead.
Just quickly, managing conflict and how you outlined to tackle this is, I agree with. Can you go to the previous slide? In terms of the environment and your eye towards our school environments and how we can, you know, it's been noted, uh, you know, just how the building looks, how it feels, i- it's, it's a big deal. And I know that our custodial staff do a tremendous job and they're, they're going above and beyond. But an eye toward that is also, uh, you know, it's, it's good to hear and the things that you, it will improve, you know, things that you might take for granted, you know, orderly, efficient student entry dismissal, me also want, you know, just how the building, how it flows and, and looks is, um, and ways that we're attuned to it and improving it.
Anybody else? See nobody? Is that the end of your presentation?
That is the end, yeah.
Okay, um, so can I get a motion?
Move to approve superintendent goals and focus indicators for 2023, 2024 with the modifications we discussed and as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
I have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Uh, moving on to four point six, approve the 504 Plan Coordinator position.
Yes, this is actually.
I'm sorry, the coordinator job description, sorry.
The 504 Coordinator job description is in your materials for tonight. This is a new, um, a new position that I think solves what I understand to be maybe a longstanding problem around the development and review and implementation of 504 plans at the high school. Elsewhere in the district, our counselors are responsible for 504 plans. Percentage-wise, there's, and, and numbers-wise, there's kind of a, a large number of 504 plans at the high school spread out. And, uh, in recent times, the school psychologists have been responsible for those plans with the guidance counselors participating in their, um, in their annual review meetings. I think it really more appropriately resides outside of the realm of the school psychologist. And we also are having school psychologists stretched very, very thin in terms of their responsibilities to special education in particular with testing and evaluations. So this would bring the, the program into more alignment with how the plans are developed and implemented across the district and how students are supported in receiving accommodations as a result of section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. Mary Beth Shea is here. She oversees the counseling teams, as you know, and has been working with Liz Friedman, Erin Eastman, and also Brooke Steich. We had this reviewed with the union prior to coming tonight to outline the performance responsibilities. We think that having the 504 Plan Coordination consolidated in one individual will help with consistency and oversight and ownership and yield a more consistent set of practices in terms of the plan's development and implementation. I'm sure Mary Beth would be happy to answer any questions. I did ask her to come if, if you had any. But we're looking for approval of this, which would be, later on, you'll see, it's proposed to be part-time in lieu of a caseload, numbers.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the 504 Plan Coordinator job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to four point seven, approve the school crossing guard job description.
Thank you. So the school crossing guards have historically been part of the Barnstable Police Department. There are currently two vacancies. And with these, there's two positions and two vacancies. And with these vacancies, they approached me and proposed that the school department take the school crossing guards into the, into our team, which is actually a trend that's happening. Many school crossing guards are within the employment of school districts versus the police department. They're having some challenges recruiting crossing guards. I do think that with our, you kind of, how the, the folks that we're bringing into the school area, we might be able to recruit a little bit more effectively, given the people who are looking at, at jobs in schools. And so I've talked with the police department. I've talked with Bill Cole. And Bill put together this job description that we're requesting your approval of. It is, basically mirrors what the job description had been as part of the police department and just sort of puts it in our, in our framework. The person, the people, ultimately, there's a request here for two positions. Later on, would report to the Director of Transportation. And I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the school crossing guard job description as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on past four point eight to five point one. So now it is the, um, the actual positions. So going on to five point one, approve a point seven FTE Guidance Counselor, point three FTE 504 Plan Coordinator position at BHS.
Thank you, yeah. So in talking with Erin Eastman and Liz Friedman and Mary Beth, we're thinking that the coordinator, the 504 coordinator, given the number of plans that there are, how many meetings there would be on an annual basis, would be about a point three. This is something that we would monitor and keep track of and revisit. We have a vacancy in the Counseling Department. So my request would actually be to, when you read the motion, to approve a point seven FTE Counselor, point three FTE 504 Plan Coordinator, which would allow the position to be filled by a current Guidance Counselor or we could hire for a school adjustment counselor at point seven, which is where the vacancy is, and a point three 504 Coordinator.
Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve one, zero point seven full-time counselor, zero point three full-time equivalent, 504 Plan Coordinator position at Barnstable High School is presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Five point two, approve two crossing, two school crossing guard positions.
So this is, um, to have two school crossing guards. One is at BIS and one is at Hyannis West. We have been in discussion with, um, the police department as well as the Town Finance Department where a budget transfer would be made available from their budget to our budget in order to support the salaries.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve two school crossing guard positions as presented in tonight's materials.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Five point three, we had already moved. So five point four, approve one FTE Personal Care Assistant Position at Centerville Elementary.
So based on some new students moving in, there is a request from Principal Kim White, supported by our Director Catherine Zinni for an additional PCA at Centerville to support the students and the services on their IEPs. In terms of funding it, we would be looking within our current budget to support it, shifting some things around.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve one full-time equivalent Personal Care Assistant Position at Centerville Elementary.
I'll second.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to five point five, approve one FTE Personal Care Assistant Position at High West, Hyannis West Elementary.
After talking with Mrs. Amato, I would ask that we remove this from the agenda. We do not.
So that's been removed?
Thank you.
Enough said.
Five point six, quarterly finance update. Chris.
As Chris is coming up, I would just, um, I would just point everybody to the, their packet that there was the reports that Chris had given us ahead of time through board docs. Chris, welcome.
Right, thank you very much.
Figured I would preempt you, say it while you're walking.
No, yeah, that's perfect, yep, thank you. So as Mike mentioned in closing, your meeting packets are three financial reports that detail year-to-date activity through September 30th. The reports included are a full line item operating budget, a summary revolving fund report, and a summary capital budget report. Along with informing the school committee and the superintendent, the Finance Department uses these reports to regularly monitor spending, ensure that charges are being coded to the rec, the correct accounts, and it helps us plan for our upcoming budget, which will be FY '25, which, believe it or not, we have already started that process. So I'm happy to report, as it relates to the quarter one reports, that the overall financial position to date is strong. There are no major concerns that we've identified and everything is tracking and trending as it should be. So you'll receive your next quarterly reports in March, but you'll actually receive a more updated year-to-date glimpse of the financial picture as we prep for the FY '25 budget closer to the new year. Happy to answer any questions or feel free to email me if you have any.
Any questions?
No, but I just want to say that I read through them and, and it's great to have that snapshot picture. I know it's always fluid and it, it helps me build confidence that we're doing our due diligence with oversight. So thank you for submitting those with plenty of time for us to read them. That was well before we needed them, that we got them emailed.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, we're all set. Chris, have a good night.
You too.
Moving on to five point seven, approve FY '24 Grants, Gifts, and Donations. It was in our packet. Are there any questions? If not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve fiscal year '24 Grants, Gifts, and Donations as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Have a motion seconded, voiced, voted all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to five point eight, approve Council Payable Warrant FY '24 Warrant Number 20. Can I get a motion, please?
Remove to approve Council Payable Warrant FY '24 Warrant Number 20 in the amount of $163,703.96.
I second.
Have a motion seconded, any questions? Seeing none, the voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it three to one. Now we will be moving on to, I will make a motion. Move to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session, approve the school committee executive session minutes for October 4th, 2023, and October 26th, 2023, and to discuss strategies and preparations for negotiations with the Barnstable Teachers Association. Can I get a second?
Second.
Have an emotin second, have a motion and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair is a yes, passes unanimously. That will conclude our public session of the school committee meeting and have a good night. That will conclude our public session of the school committee meeting and have a good night.
In front of the, the House, which is.